The October 14th, 2025, meeting of the Anarundel County Board of Health is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Good morning. Dr. Toni Gedna, our health officer, is here, and I will let you introduce everyone with you. Dr. Gedna, you can go ahead and get started.
I'll actually start with the staff that are here this morning. So I'd like to, one, start by thanking everyone who helps to put this presentation together. This is not an individual activity by any stretch of the imagination. And so the folks that are with me at the table are Dr. Topay Bada, the deputy health officer for public health, and Sean Kane, the deputy health officer for operations. In the audience with us, Megan Pringle, director of communications, Sandy O'Neil, director of behavioral health, Jennifer Snyder, director of disease prevention and management, Don Kurdiyan, director of environmental health, Peggy Cruz, director of family health services, Karen Siska Creel, director of school health services, Courtney Scott, our acting director of finance, and Donna Perkins, the director of the office of assessment and planning. And so all of these folks work really diligently to make sure that we provide you with the most up-to-date information from the health department, and also when we get into questions, if there's something I don't know, these are the folks that I'll be calling on today. But also, thank you to many other members of the health department team who helped to put this presentation together today, but also that do all of the fantastic work that we'll be talking about during our presentation. I also want to acknowledge our colleagues from the Mental Health Agency. Adrianne Meckler and her team are here with us this morning, so as we get into mental health agency business and crisis intervention, happy to have them here with us, so they're also able to answer questions as needed. Thank you to those of you who gave us thoughts and things that you would like covered this morning. Always really helpful to make sure that our presentation is covering what's top of mind for county council, but also what's top of mind for residents. And so this particular slide is one that we started presenting with the last presentation, when there were questions about how the changes at a federal level would impact the health department's budget. And so there are a couple of things I want to make sure that we go over with this slide, because as my presentation proceeds, some of this will be important to remember. So this is just a breakdown of the county general funds that we receive, also opioid abatement funds, a small pot of funds that we've received via the Video Lottery Fund, grants, and then state core funding. And then we break down the grants, state and federal, and the federal funds for us are passed through from the state, so we don't have any direct federal funding, so anything that's coming to us as a department is coming via the state health department down to us as a local jurisdiction. Okay, so I'm going to start this morning with federal updates. I think for those of you who sent us questions, there were thoughts on what's coming, what you all should know, and just understanding some of the things that will definitely be impacting the health of Anarundel County residents. I'm going to start this morning with an overview of Medicaid. This is not short, so I want to start with that. And this time span is really important to understand that all of these changes do not go into place at the same time, so understanding who will be impacted and when is really important for a lot of these, and then also what we know and do not know at this time in the conversations that we've had with the state and others around this. Just a quick overview of Medicaid for both the county and the state. So in Anarundel County, we have roughly 107,000 folks enrolled in Medicaid, and the health department's role with this is that we enroll people, right? We are the enrollment center for the county. Our M-CHIPS staff work to do this. A couple of really important distinctions this morning. Traditional Medicaid enrollment is roughly 82,000 people, almost 83,000, and of course, these numbers fluctuate from month to month. And expansion Medicaid enrollment. So when I, throughout this presentation, you'll hear me mention expansion adults or Affordable Care Act adults multiple times. These are the individuals who, after the Affordable Care Act was put into place, were eligible to receive Medicaid based on their income and other factors. So these are folks, these are not children, these are not necessarily disabled individuals, but this is one of the groups of adults that we will see most impacted by the changes that have been put into place by the one big beautiful bill act. So in Anarundel County, there are about 25,000 people that fit into this category. The state of Maryland is projecting that about half of those individuals, after some of these changes go into place, and this is not all at once, will lose their coverage. So we're looking at between 12,000 and 13,000 people in the county over a span of time. Losing their coverage doesn't necessarily mean, and I'll get into how they may end up losing that coverage, doesn't mean that they're not going to be eligible, but there's a lot of different changes that go into place to make either folks ineligible or different changes in how you have to re-enroll that may make it difficult for people to do so. A little bit of how Medicaid is utilized in the county. ER visits, roughly 140,000 visits for, that are Medicaid enrollees, and that's about one-fourth of the ER visits in the county. And then when you're looking at Medicaid as the primary insurance for about 29% of resident births. So when you look at the state, about 40% of all births are covered by Medicaid. In Anarundel County, that's about 29%. So there's some statistics for the state at the bottom, but I'd also have you really pay close attention to the amount of money, federal funds that the state receives per year via Medicaid, which is $8.5 billion, I'm sorry. And that, some of these changes will also impact the amount of funding that the state is receiving, and that's where that previous slide about how much money we receive from the state and other grants really gets important, because we'll be paying close attention to where those cuts have to happen or may roll down at a, at a local level. Okay, so I'm going to jump right in, and this will be in chronological order. So when the bill passed, a few things went into place this past summer. So as of July 4th, 2025, people who typically had been allowed to use Medicaid in certain programs, and this one is primarily impacting Planned Parenthoods, but it restricts federal funding to nonprofit community providers who deliver family planning and abortion services. And that's why it is primarily Planned Parenthood, because that abortion service is specifically done oftentimes by Planned Parenthood clinics. And so the state has done a few things to make sure that there's funding in place for these clinics, but we're also looking at what we can do as a department to help close any gaps, because this, they are a safety net provider for a lot of folks. And so understanding how this impact will play out over time is something that we're watching really closely and trying to understand what the needs are and what services folks may be missing. Something else that went into place this summer, so the state, in order to come up with its share of the Medicaid funding that is required by the federal government, previously states could decide how they wanted to tax providers. And mostly, when I say providers, we're talking about hospitals, nursing home facilities, and managed care organizations. This is typically, these sorts of taxes are not your private physician's offices, where I own one practice and I see, you know, a small number of patients relatively. But looking at freezing the ability to have additional taxes, so let's say something changes and the state now has to fund more of their Medicaid. Previously, they could make a decision on how they wanted to fund or tax providers. What they're saying now is that the ability to do that is frozen, and the state is really working to see what sort of grandfathering, and if grandfathering will be allowed for all of the tax, taxes that are currently in place. So this is one that the state is still actively working on to understand if any of the current things that are being taxed to providers will actually have to change as well, in addition to their inability to change those taxes and increase revenue for the Medicaid program specifically. So we've skipped in time, so you'll see that we don't see another implementation actually going live until October 1st of 2026. And this one, I'll be perfectly honest about, I don't fully understand yet, because I'm not as well-versed in all of the different classifications of immigration status. But this will limit Medicaid coverage to legal permanent residents in certain Cuban and Haitian immigrant groups, and those through certain compacts of free association. And so a lot of folks are trying to figure out, are they in this group? What does it mean? There are roughly 60,000 participants at a state level that may be losing coverage. And just to note, the state, there are a lot of questions about how to disaggregate this data to understand, when they're giving these kind of overarching numbers, how do you drill down and understand exactly who's impacted in there? So they're working with the Hilltop Institute to hopefully have better information early next year, which will hopefully allow us to understand, what are the populations, who are the individuals we need to be outreach to, and how can we better communicate specifically what this impact will be to individuals? So this will not impact emergency Medicaid within this provision, but it will potentially have some folks who were previously covered no longer eligible. And so this one is one that we'll come back with, I hope, in May, with more information on exactly which groups throughout the county we're talking about from our immigrant populations. Retroactive coverage. There are limits on what we can do now. So previously, there was about 90 days. If you, for whatever reason, lost your coverage, there was some error in paperwork, something happened, you could go back 90 days and retroactively bill Medicaid once you were re-enrolled. This change means for that, it's those expansion adults, it's now a 30-day window, right? Which, a lot of implications for that, for our staff and for the residents. For all other enrollees, it's now two months. So even if the populations that aren't as heavily impacted, like individuals with disabilities and children, they still have a shorter window than they've had previously. So what happens when you have a shorter window? This means uncompensated care. So if you've been, maybe you're not aware that you've actually lost your coverage, maybe it hasn't quite hit the system just yet, and you are going to see your providers as normal, and then you find out. This means that the individuals will be billed. We know that a lot of these individuals may not actually be able to afford that care, so you have uncompensated care for hospitals and providers. And then for us at the health department, it really means trying to get people turned through the system as quickly as possible. If we know we only have 30 days for you to retroactively bill, we have to get you re-enrolled as quickly as possible. And to be quite frank, we'll touch on how much staffing is required for some, to implement some of these changes, but this is one that will actively change the staffing and the churn and the turnaround that we need as a department. And we're really concerned about what this means for folks who then will have medical bills coming in that they've not before, and this time, this shortened timeframe for individuals. Okay, another really large change for your expansion adults in January of 2027. Currently, people are only required, just like individuals on private insurance, you know, there's open enrollment periods once a year. People will be required to renew their insurance with Medicaid for this population, that 25,000 folks, twice a year. So this is one of the ways that we anticipate people will lose their coverage, just because there's more paperwork, more to do, it's a change, some people will miss that this is happening. So making sure that we're communicating again gets really, really important. And we also have to look back, right, to a three-month period to make sure that some of the new eligibility requirements and criteria are met while they're applied. So this really changes a number of things for us internally. Again, that's 25,000 people that we now have to see twice a year instead of once a year. That's roughly 50,000 visits. This does have to be done in person for re-enrollment, so we're really trying to figure out with the state what can be done differently. Are there other technologies that can be utilized to help move this along, to make sure that individuals are not losing their coverage, just as an oversight of the fact that you have to do this twice a year? But it is a really significant change for the way that people have been engaging with the system. Okay, another really large change is a work requirement for these individuals, and talking with the state and trying to better understand how many of the expansion adults are currently working. They estimate, and they know overall, right, that adult Medicaid participants, roughly 65% to 70% of those individuals are working. So they know that a lot of these individuals are working, but are they working enough hours to meet this requirement? We couldn't tell you, right? I could tell you that people are working or not, but from what we currently gather in the application process, I don't have to know the number of hours that you're working. I need to know your income, and those sorts of things for eligibility, but it really will change, and we don't exactly know what the process will be to gather this information. So the federal government has left it up to states to determine how to collect this work requirement. They've laid out that it has to be at least 80 hours per month. This includes if you're enrolled in higher education, if you are volunteering, or if you have a paid position, but how do you collect the information if someone is volunteering? What's required for schooling? How do we document this so that it's satisfactory? And I think the state is really working to make sure that whatever they put in place is not overly burdensome, but also meets what the federal government is asking, because they can come back and say, you've not given us enough information, right? For instance, if the state said, oh, we just want to let everyone self-attest, it's most likely that that's not going to be acceptable, and so they're really trying to think about what sort of documentation is required, and this is one of the things that they're actively working on. But this also means additional work for staff, and additional work for employers, volunteer organizations to provide this documentation, and for individuals to know that they need to bring this with them now. And what does that mean, right? What if you're not quite there on the number of hours in that three-month period prior to re-enrolling? So there's a lot of unknown questions for this just yet, on how it will work. There is a group of us with the, with the county government led by the county executive's office, looking at how to help individuals with this. Are there work programs that can be put into place, volunteerism programs, to help those that we know don't currently meet this measure? And again, we don't know exactly who these individuals are, and we have roughly a year to pull it together, and honestly, we don't really have a year. Because open enrollment starts in October of every year, I think, in talking to the state, and then even thinking about what we need to do internally, this is something we need to have staffed up and trained as best we can by next summer. We can't really train staff through the open enrollment period, because it's already the busiest time and most hectic time of the year. And so thinking that October through December of next year is a, is not really a set of time that we would have, and this goes into place January 1 of 2027. And so we've got a few months to get this together, but it's going to take a lot of work to make sure that we're, we're moving this along. Okay, restrictions on state-directed payments. So this is one where the state has been able to set specific rates above what Medicare is paying, right? So if Medicare's rate for something is, we'll just say $300, the state could say, we're going to pay above the Medicaid rate for whatever reason, and there's lots of different reasons to do that. If it's provider shortages, providers actually wanting to enroll Medicaid in Medicare, folks, this does incentivize them to see those patients. The state can no longer establish rates higher than Medicare, right? And so that will change. I think the types of providers and the number of providers willing to take on more and more of individuals who are Medicare enrollees. So there's a lot to look into with this one as well, and understanding what the changes will mean, especially as the state moves into the ahead model, and looking at primary care dollars, as well as the quality improvement program. So a lot of these dollars are also tied to better outcomes, right? So it's not just that the rates for certain things are higher, but if you're performing at a certain level. So for instance, if a percentage of your patient population has their hypertension controlled, if your individuals that you're serving with diabetes are actually getting their testing for diabetes as they need to, and their A1C is controlled, those organizations are incentivized to do that via the state. Losing that incentive, I think, also changes potentially some of the quality that you see, because it is fiscally advantageous for organizations to make sure that they're focusing on these metrics, and those metrics are not pulled out of thin air, right? They're actually looking at the things that really change outcomes and life expectancy for individuals, and so we will continue to look at what this means and understand what it means for providers. But as you're hearing from both residents and the healthcare community at large, there are a number of different ways that this will be impacting how they operate, the funding that they receive, and in the conversations that we're having, both with hospital partners and other partners, this is top of mind for everyone, right? Understanding what things looked like before the Affordable Care Act, knowing that we're not going all the way back, but that some of this will look much more like it did before that, and understanding how to unwind some of the things that have happened is difficult. And to understand exactly how this will impact, because there are, as you see, so many different types of changes kind of coming at the system across roughly a year's time span is, we'll continue to watch this really closely. Okay, mandated cost sharing for Affordable Care expansion adults. So right now, states charge a premium in cost-sharing requirements, but it's relatively low, and intentionally trying to keep it low, and the state can really decide if they want to have cost sharing or not. This particular change mandates cost sharing, again, for that 25,000 expansion adults, and it cannot exceed 5% of their income, but to go up to 5% of your income going to cost sharing for your healthcare is a substantial change for some individuals in the amount of their income that they're spending on their healthcare consistently. So again, as I mentioned, the state is projecting that half of these individuals will lose coverage for a number of different reasons. This may be one of them. And we're trying to get to a better place where we actually have projections on, how many people do we think will lose their coverage because of this? But some of this, we're not going to know until it actually happens, and so hopefully, over the next year or so, we'll be able to come back and actually share, people have lost their coverage for these different reasons, or this is why these things are happening, but right now, a lot of the projections are just kind of rolled up into one large bucket of people losing their coverage, based on all these very different nuanced changes. Okay, this is one specifically for that state, so that 85, or $8.5 billion that we were talking about earlier. Right now, CMS can recruit federal funds for erroneous payments that exceed 3%. Moving forward, the ability for the federal government to recoup things based on errors, and there's a bunch of different ways to make errors in this system, there's really no cap on that, so the state doesn't know how much money they'll lose. And previously, it was if these errors were truly errors, right, and the state was working, and locals were working in good faith to fix them, they would, again, cut it off at that 3% threshold. We don't know how much money will be potentially recouped by the federal government from the state as they're checking for errors, and how they will go about checking for those errors. We know what happens right now, but what other changes will be put into place, we don't really know, and the state doesn't have an accurate prediction on what that fiscal impact will be. So we will have to actually see, and this one is October of 2029. So we're, again, a couple of years out from this change actually going into place, but this changes the amount of funding that the state would potentially have for Medicaid as it allows for the feds to recoup more. Okay, so what's the impact here at a local level, at least on the health department? We're going to face significant changes in surge and demand and complexity across what we're doing. And in order to do this, we're going to have to expand staff. There's absolutely no way for the staff that we currently have, who are very busy with the current numbers, to now check for a work requirement, do twice-a-year enrollment for folks, that 25,000 individuals, and honestly, even answer questions, right? A lot of folks are very confused about what this means for them, if it impacts them, how it will impact them, and we anticipate those questions increasing. So thinking about both calls and foot traffic to the department increasing, verification and compliance, how do we make sure that we're actually verifying some of these new pieces of information that are required, but also, as we mentioned, that shorter timeframe, because we know care is only reimbursable retroactively for 30 days. So we also have a shorter timeframe to do more work in. Having more renewals and retention, enrollment instability, just knowing that more people will fall off of their coverage for different reasons increases the amount of work that we'll have to do as well. And then a lot around community and resident engagement, right? This is something, you all are listening to me present this now, I'm sure you have many, many, many questions. This is hard to communicate to the public. This is not one that's very simple. There are lots of rules to this, and it is technically, it's technically nuanced. And so understanding, how do we communicate this to the broader public, so they understand if they're impacted, and what they need to do with that impact is something that we'll be working really heavily on, and have been in conversations with others about. So like, for instance, the director of the Department of Social Services and I have been talking about how to communicate this with folks, because there are many other changes going into place. So when you think about SNAP, should we be presenting separately, or should we be presenting together to talk about Medicaid and SNAP changes at the same time? How are we putting communications out to these groups so that they understand what's coming? How do we make sure that families understand, maybe you are no longer eligible as an Affordable Care expansion adult in your household, but that doesn't actually impact your children, right? These are the types of things that we need to make sure that people understand, that there may be differences in what is happening within your household even. So your ineligibility doesn't mean that for your family necessarily. So there's a lot to make sure that people actually know about their coverage and how to now interact with the system. Okay, we're going to stop talking about Medicaid and move into federal changes and what we've seen with vaccines. Just to give you all an update, this is another one where we're seeing some confusion from residents in trying to access vaccines, understanding their eligibility, trying to understand if their insurance companies are going to cover specifically the COVID vaccine that they're looking for, and then there's still some information we don't have. So just to give you an update on what's happening in the state, in September, Maryland joined the Northeast Public Health Collaborative, so this is a group of states, you see here listed on the slide, who are working to develop vaccine recommendations and other public health guidelines. This is really new. So exactly how this will work, the best ways to put those together, the best way to communicate that out, is still something that the state is actively working to figure out. There are some recommendations that have come out specifically around COVID, but they're looking to see what else needs to be done and what other types of guidance might potentially need to be provided. In December of last year, there was a bill passed to make sure that the vaccine schedule, as it was on December 31st of 2024, would be covered by insurers. There's been some hiccups with this. I think the main hiccup is changes with the FDA. So the vaccine schedule that's put out by the CDC is one thing, the FDA's approval for things and how they can be used are a separate thing. And so we've seen, for instance, with COVID, if the FDA changes what's considered on-label and off-label uses, that changes who can provide that vaccine. So the best way to describe this would be, the vast majority of residents go to the pharmacy for their vaccinations. Pharmacists cannot provide things off-label. So if you're ever at your provider's office and they say, hey, this medication is indicated for this, but it can also be used for this, but this is an off-label use, that is a clinical decision that medical providers are able to make. It's not a decision that pharmacists can necessarily make, so it's changed, what does that mean? And then whether insurance companies will cover an off-label use, right? You all have probably been through prior authorizations, and what does that look like? So we've heard from a lot of insurance companies, at least for now, they are intending to cover it, especially throughout the rest of the year. And the guidance that's come out, at least as of last week, from the federal government around this, initially, the guidance was anyone 65 or older or high-risk, but defining how you then identified yourself as high-risk was a question, right? Do you need to bring documentation? Do you need to do anything differently? As of last week, it is still, from a federal perspective, only recommended for those over 65, and they are encouraging shared individual decision-making for everyone else. And so what is shared individual decision-making? This is encouraging people to talk to a medical provider and/or clinician, and that would include a pharmacist, a nurse, really anyone who would be counseling you on a vaccine before you received it. So what we've been told, at least thus far, is that this actually doesn't change anything for individuals, but it has confused people in, do I have to go talk to my provider before I get it? Can I make this decision? And who's classified as a provider, right? So if you're coming to the health department, our nurses have always gone through the vaccine information sheet with individuals, that counts. That counts. If the pharmacist is going through that vaccine information sheet that we're required to give out, that also counts. But I think some folks don't exactly know what that means. And when you say it's not recommended, but you should make an individualized decision, I think it leaves some folks to decide whether or not this is something they want to do or not. And I think we've, we've seen that over the past few years. We've definitely seen the number of individuals interested in the COVID vaccine going down. But I think one of the big things that we're seeing now is folks who want to receive a vaccine being confused about whether or not they have it. There've been some issues with shipping and getting it out. So for instance, with the health department, for children specifically, we are a part of the Vaccine for Children's Program, which is a federal program. They cannot ship any vaccine out to us until it is approved by the CDC and the CDC Director signs off on that, and then they can ship those vaccines. There's been a significant delay. They've started to ship them now, but typically this would have been done some time back. So some individuals who already know that they would like to have a vaccine or know that they are high-risk have been looking for vaccines and have been unable to find them. Or, again, providers and pharmacists have also had questions. So we've seen just a different array of access. Some pharmacies have had it, some providers have not, and we have not had it. So we are hoping to have shipments coming in very soon. We've been told that VFC is shipping out, at least on the children and adolescent side, but it's led to some confusion, mostly for individuals who are interested in receiving a vaccine. So just wanted to share, this is the 2025-2026 vaccine recommendations as it relates to cold and flu season or respiratory illness season for flu vaccines, RSV, and COVID-19. And so you'll see that specifically looking at COVID-19, that is different than what's being recommended. So what the state is recommending is different than the federal recommendation. We're not seeing any changes in flu vaccine recommendations or RSV vaccine recommendations, but these are critically important. One of the things that I will point out is for children, six months to 23 months. This is a particular group that it not being recommended for kind of goes against what we see from a hospitalization and illness perspective, right? So when we talk about those that are over 65, we see those individuals in the hospital often with pneumonia, other complications of respiratory illness. But we also see that in the youngest population, that six-month to 23-month-aged child. And so that's been a concern for us, that parents will be able to access it. This is already a more difficult group to vaccinate for a couple of reasons. One, pharmacists are not able to vaccinate anyone under the age of three. Many pediatrician's offices, because there's been a decrease interest in it, have not carried it. And for a while, there weren't multi-dose vials. So for instance, you may give one vaccine, you break the seal on the vial, you have a certain amount of time to use it. If you don't have enough other children interested, then providers have to throw that vaccine away, and that's costly. So some providers have said, we're not going to do this. So for the health department, figuring out how to close that gap is something we worked on last year. So even children who are not necessarily VFC-eligible, we were working to try to make sure that youngest group was able to access their vaccine. So this is one group that we'll really be keeping a close eye out on, because we do see increased hospitalizations through respiratory illness season and want to make sure that parents are coming in to get those youngest children vaccinated. They do not have the immune systems yet to kind of fight off many of these things. What are we doing at a local level? Trying to make sure that we have information on what people want to know, what are the recurring questions that we're receiving, and how are we giving staff the tools to actually answer the questions that they need to answer? We want to make sure everyone has an answer, whether or not you agree with vaccinations or not. Everyone deserves an appropriate answer from us, but we also do not want staff kind of going back and forth with the public, arguing over recommendations and what's happening. So trying to come up with standardized messaging to help staff understand what to say and when to elevate it to someone else. Monitoring our comments on social media, trying to see what's the biggest pain point for people or frustration that they're experiencing, and how to understand what messaging we're putting out. And trying to be as clear as possible, because as these things kind of change from week to week, I really think it's the communications and the understanding that suffers the most. The changes that are actually going into place at this point, like it shouldn't impact a lot of people's ability to get it, but it does impact their understanding of what can happen. And it's definitely slowed down our ability to vaccinate earlier in the season for folks. So this is just a little on what we're doing internally to try to make sure we're keeping folks informed. Just as a point of reference for you all, to understand what are the vaccination rates? And this is what we saw for 2024-2025 season. Influenza remaining around 33% of the county. We definitely see more older adults in both of these groups being vaccinated, and then about 16% of the county receiving a COVID-19 vaccine. And again, over 70% of those individuals are going to pharmacies, but it is critically important to keep those vaccinations going, to reduce hospitalizations and deaths, because that's where we really see them truly having an impact, is people's ability to save off critical illness and death. Okay, so I'm going to get into some of our more regularly scheduled programming that we typically go through with the health department. A health equity plan. So for probably close to two years, we've been working on creating a health equity plan for the department. And that plan is in the folders that you have, if you're watching this presentation or you access it online. The link there on the bottom, aahealth.org will help you find it. But looking at six different areas, and these areas were identified through conversations with community members, through conversations with other healthcare providers and folks that work in the space, but chronic disease, youth well-being, we've heard quite a bit about behavioral health, maternal and infant health, access to healthcare, and the social determinants of health. This is something that we will be continuing to make sure that we're focusing on these areas, understanding how to disaggregate this data. And throughout the presentation, you'll hear of the spaces that we're already working in here, but these are also areas where we do see marked disparities in groups. And so we want to make sure that we are targeting individuals who are the most vulnerable or are most marginalized in some of our efforts and understanding what the differences are and how we can make an impact there. Of course, we are concerned about access to healthcare as we talk about that 25,000 Medicaid expansion adults losing coverage. What does that mean? What does it mean for the healthcare providers in the county? So there are some of these that, again, because we've been working on this plan for about two years, some of it may have to change, but I think we've written it in a way that it allows for that sort of flexibility. And we will be aligning to adjust as needed for what people need. We are finishing up our strategic plan that we've been operating under as a department for the last three years. So we did this strategic plan in 2022. So really, right after we had finished up being very busy with COVID and vaccines and many other things. And a lot of what we were focusing on was reinvigorating our workforce, enhancing our infrastructure, community partnerships, and health equity and health of the county overall. These were things that came out of that plan. And so here's just a few highlights of what we've been able to do over the last three years. We will be engaging in a new strategic planning process starting in January of next year. We will be reaching out to all of you for your thoughts on what we should be focusing on and what we should be doing. But we have spent a tremendous amount of time and are continuing the efforts on our infrastructure in particular. I think the pandemic really highlighted areas where processes were inefficient or where you go to many people working remotely and you find out, okay, we don't, this is a piece of paper that gets passed around the office, right? What are the different ways that we could be doing things? So just a couple of examples here. We have purchased a new platform for our policies and procedures. They were held on a drive previously, and this is something we'll be rolling out to staff. Our leadership team is working really diligently right now to make sure everything is accurate. But this is also something we heard from staff and their employee satisfaction, right? Understanding where are all the policies and procedures kept? Are they all up to date appropriately? So that's something we've been working on. We also heard from people that they wanted more training. So we're actively building out a new learning and development curriculum for staff. We've also just recently launched a new employee website, thank you to our comms team. So there's just a lot of work that's been happening to make sure that we are focusing on the employees and how they do their work, to then better improve how we're providing services to individuals. But also, some of the other things that were a part of our strategic plan, we're putting out this health equity plan. It was training our staff on diversity, equity, and inclusion. It was ensuring that we had broader support of the language line. That's something we heard from individuals in the staff satisfaction survey. Hey, I'm, I'm not able to do my job at the optimal level at all times, because sometimes I'm running into language barriers. And how are we addressing that better and making sure that staff, because we do have those resources? And the county has also been really, really helpful in, in increasing their language line offerings and the way that you can work within that platform, I think has been incredible. So these are just a few of the things that we've looked at. We've surveyed our staff ad nauseam. They are tired of us and surveys, but we'll be back again. We participated in a national survey this year, National Public Health Wins. So we're able to compare ourselves to health departments across the country, which is really, really helpful in understanding, are we seeing things that are different? And where should we be? And also benchmarking ourselves. And then looking at the pay scale for our lowest wages in the department was really important to make sure that we're trying to get as close to a livable wage as possible for employees. So these are just a few examples of things that we've been able to do and strengthening our community partnerships, which we'll talk more about. Something else that's in your folders, we have recently released a maternal and infant health strategic plan. And so November of, no, it'll be two years next month. We created a maternal and infant health task force with a lot of different partners throughout the county, participating our hospitals, pediatricians, and it's been really fantastic. So within that plan, you'll see two areas, improving care. And there's a bit of a descriptor on what that looks like, so that's care coordination, looking at a timely response to pregnancy-associated morbidities and mortalities, as well as mental health needs, which has come up quite a bit. And then education and awareness is the other large overarching goal. So how are we providing education, not only to the expecting parents, but to members of their support groups, right? How do you understand if someone in your family needs additional support? What are warning signs? What should you be looking for? And we've released a new public-facing dashboard on maternal and infant health. So you can look and see things like breastfeeding rates, infant deaths, the leading causes of infant death, those preterm births and different birthing demographics. So I would really encourage everyone to take a look at that dashboard. And thank you to our Epi team for really working hard. And this is something that we worked through this task force and had providers in the county, as well as residents, tell us, I don't think this one makes a lot of sense. How can we better word this? Is it easy to understand? And it is an interactive dashboard, so if you want to drill down into a specific area, you can do that. It'll allow you to understand definitions of things if you don't know what a morbidity is. Or when we say, what's low birth weight? What is that category? Those definitions are provided within that dashboard. This is a slide that we always cover to make sure folks understand what the leading causes of death in Anaronda County are currently. And one that I'll highlight right now is accidents, is moved up to number three. So I'll be talking a bit about what that means when I say accidents and what are those actual causes of death for folks. Okay, so when we're talking about accidents happening throughout the county, there's really three major categories, and then there's another kind of other transportation that falls outside of a motor vehicle accident. But we're looking at accidental poisonings, falls, and motor vehicle accidents. And this has increased in the county. So looking at what we can do, how we can better understand these different areas that are accounting for about 7% of the deaths. Unfortunately, one of the things that always happens with vital statistics data is that there's always a lag, right? So we're looking at 2023 and kind of responding to that in 2025. There's not a really great way for us to get more up-to-date information, but we do recognize that this could be changing, and we're not aware of the change that is happening just yet. But this is the first time that we're seeing it move up to the third leading cause of death in my tenure with the department, so I wanted to make sure you all were aware of this. Heat-related illnesses, as summer has come to an end, we think it's really important to understand as every year, we're starting to see more and more days with a maximum temperature that's higher than 90 degrees. And that's important for several different reasons. The more really hot days we have, the more days that people are in danger of things like heat stroke and heat-related illnesses. And we want to make sure that people understand what to do and what the signs and symptoms of those things happen to be. But also, something that you'll be hearing more about today is the use of air conditionings, right? And understanding what that means for folks who have especially chronic diseases that flare up in the heat. Or those who are elderly or young and have more issues regulating their body temperatures and are more at risk for some of these heat-related illnesses. So I wanted to make sure that you all saw this increase that we're seeing in emergency room and some urgent care visits related to heat illnesses. And you'll see this chart takes us from 2022 through 2025. So we had a marked number of increases in these hospitalizations, or I'm sorry, emergency room visits, as well as urgent care visits related to this this year.
Madam Chair? Because I will, I know I'll forget if I don't ask now, what are the little red arrows on this page?
Oh, so these are just pointing out what we, the two increases that we saw, right? So as we're looking at, we didn't really see an increase in August, but in June and July, these are the months. And when we look at the temperatures, there were 10 days in June that were higher than 90 degrees. And in July, there were 14 days higher than 90 degrees. And that's when you start to see those illnesses being more prevalent. Okay, we've worked really hard through the Healthy Anaronda Coalition to start to make sure people are sharing the Find Health app. It is a really important tool to make sure that people can find different resources that are in the county. And people ask for a one-stop shop, right? And this is one way and organizations can update their own information on Find Help, which is what I think makes it the most useful, because what we see in many other things like rosters or lists of services is that they become outdated really quickly. Organizations change their services, the number changes, the hours of operations change. This allows for organizations to do that. But it also allows us to have an understanding of what people are looking for as we partner with this app. Housing is still the number one thing that residents are looking for. Health is number two, and food is number three. So as we look at what we're working on, how to do it, and through things like our community health ambassadors, making sure they have accounts to help people with this work, it really helps us in understanding what people need within the county, and this has not changed. These are the top three, have been since the end of the pandemic. Something else that's happening, just because we're in the middle of it right now. October is also known as Walktober. So if you're interested in signing up to participate, we are working with Department of Wrecks and Parks and others to look at having folks sign up to participate, right? Just a really interesting way, and I think a fun way, to encourage people to walk. And there's different ways of participating. So if you're not someone who can commit to 36 miles in the month of October, you could also be a Bay Bridge Walker, and that's a four-mile commitment across the month. If you're interested in learning more, there is a QR code as well as the website down there at the bottom. But that's something that's actively going on right now, and you can sign up a team. We continue to cover this slide because I think it's important for you all to understand when we're looking at where services will go or where we're trying to focus, where we are seeing more disparities. And so this is just, kind of goes through both zip codes and towns, but looking at the percentage of poverty in these various areas and some other information. I mentioned earlier, working with the Department of Social Services on understanding SNAP benefits. These things are crucial for us to know as a health department, right? When we talk about the social determinants of health, your access to food, your access to housing, transportation, ER visits, these are all things that impact the overall health of the community. And so we continue to make sure that we're paying close attention to these areas. And you'll see in the maps that we're providing today, many of these areas are covered for our programs. A new slide that we're trying to figure out the best way to cover how we, how these disparities play out over time. So looking at premature death and the proportion of deaths that occur for people under the age of 75. And you'll see in the darker areas, these are the percentages, areas where we see higher percentages of death before the age of 75. of death before the age of seventy-five. The lighter areas, you see folks living uh longer. And you'll see below a breakdown of at least some of the disparities we see amongst Hispanic men, amongst non-Hispanic black men, Hispanic women and non-Hispanic black women compared to uh our white residents. And so continuing to make sure that when we look through things like this, we're focusing on areas where we're seeing more premature death happening throughout the county because it's important that we're focusing there. Okay, um, if you don't participate in our Health Equity and Racial Justice Monthly Forum, we really encourage it. This is just some of the things that we've been able to cover across the year. Um, many forums have more than one topic. We also have panels come in. We recently had a group come in and talk about disability awareness and how to interact with various forms of uh individuals in the community that have different disabilities, how to talk to folks about that. So these conversations, I think, are really helpful. It's also open to the public. So we want to make sure that people come in and get this information. If there's anyone you think would do an excellent presentation and something they should be getting out to the public, we're also really open to that information upcoming this month. Actually, DSS will be coming to present on SNAP um and to talk about that. We'll be talking about Medicaid changes. So it's one of the vehicles we have to getting information out. And if you're unable to watch it um live, it's always on our website and you can, they are all recorded and you can take a look. Uh, our Community Health Ambassadors, um this program was um placed into our recurring fund, recurring funding for FY26, which we are really ecstatic about. But here's just a little bit about what they've continued to do. Mental health first aid training continues to be top of mind for the work that we're doing here. Um, but assessments conducted. We talked about Find Help and the number of folks who were referred to resources using Find, Find Help. Um, and educational events and things that these community-based organizations are hosting are really important because they're helping us to get the word out um and to make sure that we're understanding the needs of the community. We'll talk later on in the presentation about where we are with the school-based health center work. And this group also helped us to gather information from the community on that. So there's just a lot of different wonderful things that the Community Health Ambassadors are able to help us do. Uh, we're really grateful for the ongoing funding to continue this program and they do fantastic work and they're focusing on things like heat-related illnesses, right? That's one of the things that um they go out and do, weather preparedness. So it really ties into our overall goals. Uh, the Local Behavioral Health Authority, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this one, but I'm going to jump right into some of the key things that have been happening. Um, assisted outpatient treatment. So House Bill five seventy-six in twenty twenty-four. Um, said that the state of Maryland had to implement um assisted outpatient treatment. And what does that mean? So this is looking at folks who um have some sort of um mental health needs and have likely not been uh adhering to their treatment plans. This is a voluntary program that allows for families to try to do something else where a judge can issue uh an AOT treatment order and have them to put a specific treatment plan in place and working with the community. So one of the challenges with this program is that it could be implemented one of two ways, uh at a local jurisdiction level or at the Maryland Department of Health level. And as the Department of Health was really trying to figure out what this would look like, um, most jurisdictions, actually all jurisdictions in January, um opted to have the state implement at a state level because the numbers in some jurisdictions of folks who are eligible for this program are relatively low. Um, in other areas, it's a bit higher. And so we've worked with the Department of Health for the better part of this year to figure out how to make this work. And it's been finalized that there will be a state-led um AOT approach. And Anarondo County will be one of three jurisdictions um participating in this first round of jurisdictions that will be rolling this out. So you'll definitely hear more about what this looks like. Um, but treatment plans can include things like medication management, therapy, case management, other supportive services. And so we hope that this provides another outlet for families and individuals um to participate in, to hopefully get the help that they need and engage with the system. Uh, and I'd like to thank both the Mental Health Agency and our Behavioral Health Staff, who have fully engaged in this process for a very long time um to get to this point and will need to engage now at an even greater rate. So thank you to those folks doing this work. Um, the Maryland Consortium on Coordinated Community Support Services. This is just a slide to help you understand how this actually works. So if you're, the Local Behavioral Health Authority is both the Department of Health and the Mental Health Agency together uh and serving as the hub for the funds that are coming out through the consortium to specifically enhance services in schools um to children around mental health. So you'll see that one of the big partners here, of course, is AACPS. There's a steering committee, um and there's an advisory council as well that works to make sure that we're putting out um and understanding what these different hubs, I'm sorry, spokes that have been funded through this work are doing in the county to impact these students. So here's just a little bit on some of what's um happening for the different spokes that exist in the county. And the spokes were put into place before the hubs. So it was a little out of the normal order, but we are working our way through that. And again, thank you to the Mental Health Agency who um is working really closely with us on this one to make sure that we're actually providing services that families need and getting the appropriate feedback um from families and students on how things are going with their services. Okay, so into our behavioral health services, going to skip a few of these, uh making sure that we cover what we're seeing in opioid overdoses. Uh, as you'll see, we have continued since this covers twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five, um but continuing to see a decrease in all overdoses and a decrease in fatal overdoses, which is just fantastic. Uh, we are really thrilled to see these changes happening uh and hope that this trend continues. And this is the fewest amount of opioid overdoses that we've seen fatal and non-fadals since we started tracking this in twenty nineteen. Uh, and we think this is due to a number of different things. But here's just a little bit about what the overdose prevention team has been doing um in twenty twenty-five and some of their key accomplishments. And this is not a trend, this decrease that we're seeing in overdoses is something we're seeing across the state. Uh, we think in good part, some of this is due to the accessibility of services, but also the accessibility of naloxone uh for individuals and making sure that we're continuing to do that. I will not read this slide out for you, but please know that there's a lot of wonderful work and a new strategic plan um that should be coming out really soon as it relates to our work with the overdose prevention team. And opioid abatement fund, community grant recipients. So the Department of Health uh receives funding from the county, um from the opioid abatement funds to put out to community providers to specifically work on um how to reduce opioid use throughout the county and overdoses. And here's just a few of the different programs and things that we've been able to fund. It is a competitive process, they do have to apply. But we've been really excited about some of the different things that they've been able to do as a result of this funding and excited to see this grow. Something new that we are currently working on that is still very much um in the development phase is an opioid abatement fund, a family support program. So we talked about the funds that we use as a department and the funds that we're able to put into the community. But we also want to actually put some funds towards families who have been impacted by the loss of a loved one to an opioid overdose. And how do we plan on doing that and what's the objective here? It's really to make sure that if you've lost a loved one and particularly a family uh or lost a parent and you're a child, we want to have a intentional focus on breaking intergenerational, intergenerational patterns of use. We know the loss of a parent for any child uh is traumatic and has longstanding um changes to what will happen in your life and your ability um to do various things. But we also know that with opioid use, there is uh, there are familial, familial ties to that. And so looking at this as a prevention effort, but also as a way to use these funds um to help individuals who have lost someone. So what we're proposing is looking at um services around mental health um and services for children as well as immediate needs if you've lost a loved one and you're looking at funeral cost, if you're looking at um housing costs that like, I need to do this immediately because I've just lost, you know, maybe one half of the earners in your household. Making sure that we're able to put together a program that's doing this. As we looked across the country, um this idea is something we've been looking at for the past year. And we found that Boston was really one of the only places that rolled it out earlier this year. So we've been in close communication with them to understand what that looks like and how they're doing it. I hope when we come back in May, we can really outline for you fully what this will look like and how it will be done, as well as using some unspent funds. Um, because that's one of the big questions, right? Where does the funding come from and are all the opioid abatement funds used? There are some areas that we're not seeing it fully utilized. So working with the county to understand what are those areas and the use cases for this. So we're really excited about actually being able to put some of these funds towards families. There is no way that we can ever actually uh account for the loss of a loved one, but we hope that some of this helps in um allowing people to get to services that they need, but also to do some of the things that they need to do immediately after the loss of a loved one and um services for children specifically. Um, overdose outreach support. So I told you that I think a number of things actually account for why we're seeing changes in overdoses. But I think one of the things in this county specifically is the really successful efforts of our behavioral health staff in outreach to people seven days a week after non-fatal overdoses. So health department staff will go to individuals' homes. Afterwards, we have attempted one hundred percent of individuals. We've been able to make contact with about half of those folks. And then about thirty-two of those individuals said they wanted to be linked to treatment, um which we think is fantastic. And so we continue to go out and provide these services um to door knock and to just say, hey, we're here if you need us. Um, and hopefully, even if now is not that moment for people, they will remember that we are a resource and feel comfortable reaching out. And we've started to extend that and build that relationship. Um, the vending machines for Health to Go and other harm reduction materials. Here's just a little bit on what we were able to do in FY25. So the number of Narcan kits, dispensed, fentanyl test strips, Xylazine test strips, as well as COVID nineteen tests dispensed um throughout those machines. And the funding sources for those machines. And we've been able to add three more units to the library locations for FY26. Something important to understand is how we decide where machines will go. If you look to the map on your right, here are the overdoses occurring um by zip code. And so we do look to put these in places where we're seeing more overdoses specifically. And then um trying to make sure that we're understanding the use of different machines, right? So our staff do a fantastic job of which machines are using which items, how quickly are they out? Each machine has a QR code um to let us know if it's out of something. There's also educational materials and resources on the sides of the machines. And our wonderful partners in the library systems in particular do a fantastic job of letting us know what's needed there and helping us to manage that. Um, but in addition to libraries, they are in both of the correctional facilities. Um, we do have one with the Department of Aging and Disability and also one with the Housing Authority in the city of Annapolis. Okay, the Mental Health Agency, um just a quick overview of what they've been up to this year. And then I'm going to get right into crisis response. Uh, because I think this is one of the areas that we always spend um a little bit of time on so you all can understand the volume of the calls and the types of things that are coming in and when they're coming in. So this gives you a sense of the, the calls that are being dispatched. So about forty-two percent of those calls are coming in outside of business hours. Um, here's a little bit on their, what's been happening by number. So warm line calls in and out, um unduplicated individuals served, so not quite twelve thousand people, stabilization visits, program assessments, and individuals diverted from hospitalization, jail or court diversion uh are all really critical. And this is their numbers from July one through June thirtieth of this year. Um, understanding the needs for children. Um, so this breaks down warm line adult calls for children versus warm line adult calls for, um, warm line calls for adults and the percentage of those calls. So we still see more than we saw pre-pandemic for children. And I don't think we're ever going to see those numbers go down in the near future. Adrian and I talk quite a bit about this. Um, but just understanding what we're seeing for the youth specifically. Okay, there's a lot more. I encourage you all to read your presentations with federal piece. I'm moving through our stuff a lot quicker than normal. So disease prevention and management, this is just a little bit about what's happening within our health centers as well as the community mobile services. And these are our healthy communities programs. So again, really ecstatic to have the ongoing funding to support these programs. But this is who we're serving, the types of things that we're doing out in the community um and things that we will continue to do throughout this year. Because we're entering into viral respiratory season, um always important to help people understand what we're seeing from ER visits, urgent care visits, um what we're seeing for um pneumonia specifically, which we watch really, really closely and had a number of conversations with our hospital partners about this. Uh, we think weekly hospitalizations for COVID nineteen and RSV and influenza were higher in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five than they were in the previous season. We do think some of that is due, again, to decreased rates of vaccination. Uh, but we'll continue to watch this and share with you. And if you're interested in keeping up with what's happening, you can always check our wastewater um dashboard on our website. And our wastewater dashboard no longer just has COVID nineteen, but there's also RSV, influenza A and influenza B information. So if you really want to know what's happening there, you can find it. But we're also able to monitor things like measles um and IMPOCs through wastewater. Okay, so hospitalizations, um this is what we saw last year. So again, we typically see sometime around the Thanksgiving um period in the year. We start to see that uptick happening. We imagine we will see the same this year, but again, we will keep you posted. And this is something that we are looking at in the health department on a weekly basis. And we also put out information as we see information, as we see spikes happening to the community about if you're high-risk, if you live with someone who is high-risk, uh now is a good time to consider um if you're in crowded areas and you feel the need to wear a mask, um or if you, if you are sick, please stay home. Hand hygiene, distancing, all of the things that we all know how to do. We try to make sure that we're getting that messaging out to folks when we see these increases happening. Okay, I told you this was going to be fast. Something that's coming up and relates back to the changes that we saw in the Medicaid. Um, not exclusively because of that change, but in twenty fourteen, the Department of Health stopped offering family planning and maternal health care within our office. Um, and this was primarily due, if you think about the timing of the Affordable Care Act, um, the health department is often one of those safety net providers. And we're looking to fill gaps where we don't see other providers in the community. Um, so I think after twenty fourteen, we didn't really see the need. I wasn't here at the time, so this is what I have been, have been told by others. But that services, the need for services um specifically through the health department had decreased. Many people were um attached to a primary care provider or an OB-GYN, which is fantastic. But we're anticipating with some of the changes to Medicaid, folks potentially losing some of their coverage, changes to providers like Planned Parenthood who are, who are able to offer um a wider range of services to the community. We want to make sure if there is a gap that we are plugging that gap. And so we'll be looking in twenty twenty-six to start with some family planning, contraceptive care, including forms of birth control, um and soft launching that in twenty twenty-six. Again, to see what the need is within the community, but also making sure um that we are understanding what else we can be doing. And here's a little bit on what we currently do. So we do STI testing and treatment. A lot of that we also send out, so we are funding other providers to do that work. We will continue to do that, but we will expand it within our offices. Um, and looking at how we are connecting this because we do things right now, like you can come in and get a pregnancy test from the health department. What are we doing if folks need access to birth control and family planning? And so this is something that I think will be really important for us to keep an eye on, to understand uh what the needs are and looking at a gradual introduction of these services in twenty twenty-six. I hope to come back to you with much more about this in May um and more formalized plans, very similar to where we are kind of in a planning phase with our family opioid um abatement fund support. These are two programs that we're actively developing as we speak. But they have not been launched yet. Um, our gun violence team, intervention team for the county. So I'm going to move past that one. Always share the data with you all on what's happening with suicides and homicides throughout the county and where we are. Um, firearm-related homicides are higher to date um compared to where we were this time last year. Last year it was- date compared to where we were this time last year. Last year, it was six at this time of year. Now, we're at nine. So, we continue to really watch this and are grateful for our police partners in both the county and the city will help us with this information and this data. And there is a GVIT dashboard, again, that's interactive, and people can go and see this information for themselves. On October 23, I am going to put a shameless plug in for our upcoming community meeting. We do these quarterly. And so, we really encourage folks to come out. We will be at the Severn Intergenerational Center, because this year, we have received some funding to help support the Man Up Violence Interruption Program in West County. So, they will be there as well. We did a, an assessment of West County via Cure Violence Global earlier this year. They will be sharing the results of that assessment, and we'll be talking about what Man Up's kind of new operating procedures will be as a result of actually operating under this model. And this is the same model that our Violence Interruption Program operates in Eastport. So, we're really excited about it. 5:30 to 7 o'clock, there's always food. So, please come out and please share this. If you, what does a gun violence community meeting look like? If you have the opportunity to click on the play button below, it'll give you some highlights from our meeting in June. And we had a really wonderful meeting with a one, a great turnout. So, thank you to everyone who continues to participate in these meetings. This year, we did something a little different. We focused on crime prevention through environmental design. And what does that mean? So, it's really thinking about the spaces that you're in and the environment that you're in can also help with decreasing violence. So, thinking about community gardens, community beautification projects. So, we did a community paint day with the Chesapeake Art Center. It had a wonderful turnout of folks, and you'll see the results if you've driven past there recently, but you can also see in the picture the final design and the update for that. And really just getting the community out to do something together was a great day. A lot of fun. Our gun lock distribution. Not going to spend a whole lot of time here. I think you all are really familiar with this, but just letting you know that we are close to 10,000 locks being distributed across the county. We have a number of different partners doing this work. And so, just really excited to continue to see this happening and being, being able to expand this into some of lock boxes last year, and continuing to get some funding from the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention and Policy to support this work throughout the county. Just a little update on the Eastport program. I think it's important that we continue to be transparent about what's happening there and sharing. So, the slide, this slide covers what we were seeing in a two-mile radius, I'm sorry, a one-mile radius of Eastport in 2023, and what we're seeing, the reduction in violence now. So, we will continue to bring you this graphic. We're also going to be putting out their first annual report, hopefully within the next month or so. We've been putting out quarterly reports on this program, but this one will be a full recap of the entire year, and we encourage you all to read it. Once it is published, we'll be sure to send it to you. Other things happening in family health. I mentioned the maternal and infant health dashboard. Here's some of the information that you can see on that dashboard, understanding the birthing demographics of the county, who's giving birth, the ages of these individuals, the race and ethnicity of individuals giving birth in the county. And those are important because as we look at the actual birth outcomes, they differ in these populations. So, when we look at preterm births, as well as the length of their hospitalizations, low birth weights, we are continuing to see disparities particularly in our Black, non-Hispanic population, and so hoping to address that through a lot of our work with the Maternal and Infant Health Desk, Task Force, but not just the task force, and I know I'm moving quick, the maternal, maternity community advisory council. So, Dr. Bada, the Deputy Health Officer for Public Health, is a board-certified OB-GYN, and she is leading the work with this task force, but specifically looking with, at Black women with lived experience to understand what we can be doing differently, how they can help us advocate, but also how they can look at what we're planning as a task force and work with the task force to say, hey, we think this will work, or this isn't the right approach, and to help inform that, because this is where we're seeing disparities in deaths as well as birthing outcomes. And so, this group is something we're really excited about that launched in January. Still trying to get their feet under them as many community groups go, but we've been able to incorporate them into some of the maternal and infant health task force work and meeting with that task force directly. We're also a part of a maternal and child health policy initiative through the National Association of County and City Health Officials. This is a three-year initiative that really helps us look at policies, kind of big P, little p, middle p. So, understanding what are your policies as an organization, as a little p, what do you do on a local level, as a medium-sized p, and then what can you do at a state or federal level. And so, understanding what that looks like and how we can address policy or understand policy, and what are those key areas. And so, really excited to see what will come out of this work. Kicked off in March of 2025. This will end in July of 2027. So, not a lot to share just yet, but much more coming in this space. Asthma and lead. This is something else that happens within our family health program, and this one's important for a couple of different reasons. As we move into respiratory virus season, we know that children and adults with asthma are more at risk for these illnesses. We also know changes in things like temperature impact asthma. So, going out into homes, understanding the impact that asthma has on children and the triggers in the environment, right? So, things like dust and dander, pet hair, mold. How are we helping to remediate those things with families? And looking at the decrease that we're seeing in our emergency room visits over the, the last year, which is really exciting. But as we mentioned earlier, we also see disparities. So, Black children in Anne Arundel County are more than three times as likely to visit the ER for asthma than all other children. And we think that a lot of this is due to unsafe housing conditions when we're out. This is the primary trigger that we're seeing. But this is a program that off, also offers things like air filters and HEPA vacuums, and other things to help remediate some of those triggers, and helps families understand what to do to hopefully eliminate some of these ER visits that we're seeing. When we're out. Again, this is another one of our maps. I think it's important that you, if you're able to kind of flip back and see where you see things like premature death, looking at zip codes with poverty levels, we do see changes from zip code to zip code in ER visits for children. This is an actual picture from one of the houses that our team visited. And when we talk about unsafe housing conditions, we do say things like mold, mice and cockroaches, and the droppings that they leave are also triggers for asthma flares. So, making sure that families understand that. Something to understand about mold, and I know we talked to each of you about this at some point or another, is that the EPA does not have a safe level for mold determined, and that is often because mold impacts different people differently. It will impact an asthmatic much more dramatically than someone who does not have a respiratory condition. So, then this is where our environmental health staff come in, and they cannot say that there's a unsafe level of mold, but we can look at what's causing the mold, right? If there's a leak somewhere that's causing this, that's where we can do something through our housing enforcement to look at. You need to remediate the, the leak, but it is a little complicated. So, we're working on both ends of the spectrum, in both the housing space as well as the actual outcomes for children. Something new that we're going to be starting this year in partnership with the state is our ability to do rapid lead testing. So, we offer rapid testing for things like HIV, hepatitis C, but we will be adding lead testing to that. Children are required to get lead testing to go to school. A number of children get missed every year, and so we want to offer this as an opportunity. And it is not a confirmatory test. This is a, hey, we need to look out. This might be something that you should be talking to your provider about. Please ask for a confirmatory test, but it is helpful in us having families understand it's something we can do on the spot for folks, which will be really helpful. So, we'll come back with more after this is fully implemented. We have not implemented yet, but the state has given us some of the rapid test kits. So, we'll be looking at how to actually do this, where we want to be doing it, and then we will let you know how it goes. I'd like to cover the dental services. Just so you know what we're doing with dental, this is a much, much-needed service in the community. As I mentioned earlier, making sure that we are filling gaps and serving as a safety net provider for those who cannot access some of these services elsewhere. So, this gives you a breakdown of what we're doing in our dental clinics, as well as dental sealant programs in partnership with Kerwin Schools specifically, has been fantastic. So, I want to really shout out the dental staff for doing all of what they do in a number of different areas. They are a small team, but they are providing services within AACPS, within Judy Centers, and our two clinics, both in Glen Burnie and here in Annapolis. This slide, I wanted to make sure you all understood the current volume for our medical assistance eligibility team. So, these are the folks who would be enrolling people in Medicare. So, when I say that we'll need more staffing, this is what they're currently doing. We will not be able to take on all of the different changes necessary. So, the state is looking to see how much funding they can garner. They're working with the Department of Budget Management right now to see what's possible, but I'm priming this as a, something that we may be talking about throughout the budget season, and asking for if we don't know exactly how much the state is able to give this, give us, or if the state is not able to give us sufficient funding, we do want to make sure we're able to cover this. School health services. Always exciting to see the number of children served here, and it is, I had the opportunity like two weeks ago to spend some time with the, the school health staff in, at Annapolis High School, and it is quite busy. And there's a lot of different things happening, and they've got wonderful relationships with all of these students. But it's also everything from, hey, we just, there was a headbutting incident in the hallway. I'm like, well, there's only one of you. Where's the other? Where's the other person? And they're, you know, horsing around to, hey, I'm here for my diabetes check, to a child who's had some severe mental illness happening recently in their lives and just needs a, a place to use the bathroom. So, there's all sorts of things going on within the health rooms, but they're providing excellent services. Wanted to update you on Vision to Learn. We were able to screen almost 5,000 children. 500 of those children received glasses through the Vision to Learn Program last year, and we're expanding it this year. So, the schools with an asterisk next to them are the schools that have been expanded to this year. So, really excited to see this continuing to grow, particularly because we've always been able to do some level of screening for students. We're now screening more students at more schools, but also they actually get to the glasses, which is the critical part, and that's free of cost. Something new that started this year, Total Healthcare, providing actual onsite services with their mobile unit that you see here on the first and third Tuesdays in June through September, when it's warm enough to kind of be outside. Excited to see this happening. And here's just a little bit about the qualifications or the criteria that people need to meet to have those well-child visits and vaccinations. Something new that started this year, and something we heard about when we talked to students about school-based health centers, is we don't always get what we need when we go. So, for middle and high school students, something we weren't providing before was the use of acetaminophen for occasional uses to treat minor discomfort. So, there's a consent form. Your parents have to consent, but if you come in and say, I have a terrible headache, we are now able to actually, if your parent has consented, to give you some Tylenol and send you back to class. That was something before that we couldn't do. I'm glad we're making, Ms. Ravi, I'm very happy with that. I'm sure you've heard a lot about this in your previous work. And it is, it's something they said, right? Like, if I have menstrual cramps, I can't get anything. So, this does allow for the parents to decide if they want their children to participate, but it gives us something else to give them while they're in school. So, very excited about this. School-based health centers. This move, this planning work is moving along really nicely. AACPS, I want to thank Dr. Bedell for his partnership with this and his entire team. But we have selected Brooklyn Park Middle School to be the pilot site for the first school-based health center. And just a reminder, the difference in what we have now. So, our health rooms are staffed by nurses and nursing assistants. School-based health centers are staffed by providers who are able to both treat, diagnose, and prescribe. And so, we will be looking at how to do this over the next year in partnership with them. We're still a good ways away from actually being ready to go, but having a school identified and working with that school directly is a major step. So, thank you to AACPS. We always talk about school health turnover, because that's been really a tremendous issue for us since the pandemic. A little bit higher than last year, but still not close to where we were in 2023 and 2022. So, very excited about that, and the continued commitment of the county to offering competitive pay and benefits to these staff members. So, we will continue to keep a close eye out on that. And then, everybody's favorite, environmental health, food protection services. We have launched a new online payment system for license renewals. So, I really hope this helps, especially for businesses that maybe a mobile unit, and you work across multiple jurisdictions, and you're not here. You don't have to come into our offices. You can do this all online now. So, we hope with the next renewal season, we'll see more folks actually using this. But this is new and ready for folks. This time of year is when we are doing our oral rabies vaccine program. So, mostly want to make sure people know that if you see folks out in this like dusty rose pink color that you see photographed here, who's a couple of our, our staff members. There's one I don't recognize, but that's Deb and Kenya there, out to do oral rabies vaccine. So, we've done a lot more this year to actually get the information out to folks, email blast. There've been targeted ads on streaming. So, if you've seen any of this coming through to let you know that we'll be here and where we are, and that it's okay. If you see these pink shirts and we're throwing stuff in the woods, don't be alarmed. But what does it mean if people want to reach out because they're seeing wildlife on their property? What do we do? So, thank you to the Police Department, who continues to be a great partner with us and letting us utilize their helicopter. We recently had the new Deputy, Deputy Secretary of Health come and take a visit, and she said, you all have a helicopter? Absolutely not. We do not have a health, a, a Health Department helicopter. This is a partnership with the Police Department. The rodent control program. I'm going to skip past this. This is a little difficult to see, but I wanted folks to understand, because when I saw this map, I thought, this is a great way of explaining why we might be at your neighbor's house and not at yours. So, when we're doing rodent control programs throughout the summer, what we're really looking at is where do we see the complaints? So, you'll see pink squares are rodent complaints, and then you'll also see where they're putting out the teams. So, these are quite literally streets. And so, really important when folks reach out to say, where are you going to be, and how can we find you? We are basing this on where we're receiving complaints. So, you'll see some areas where there are pink squares that we're not necessarily in those areas. We haven't received as many complaints in those areas. It doesn't mean that we may not change this in upcoming years, but this has allowed us to create strategic resource allocation, targeted interventions. And I want to really thank the staff that go out and do this. They get up very early in the morning to get ready to go, to look for burrows, to understand where to put these resources, and they're fantastic. But we also need the community. When we're out putting door hangers out or making sure that we can access your property, it's important that folks respond, so we get these resources on your property, and you let us know that we have your permission to do so. So, we had another successful season this year, and just wanted to share a little bit about how they go about doing this fantastic work. And that is the end of my presentation. Any questions?
As always, we're always in awe of how much the Health Department actually does with everything. I will say, really good news that y'all shared. I love seeing that the opioid, all those numbers are down again. That's fabulous. I've been advocating with the school system for a couple of years now to change their policies so that students and staff can carry Narcan at schools, knocks alone. And I have been told that they are going to be considering a policy on that this winter. So, I look forward to that, because I think that'll just be another help to have. Also, the asthma reduction numbers or the ER visits, that's, that's great. Thank you for that. And I'll say for the rodents, I have one community, and I just want to praise you all, because I have been hearing from lots of the residents about how great the team has been, and the outreach that they've done, and all the work they've done to work with everyone there. So, thank you very much. Hopefully, that means I won't get any more rat calls myself. So, but all the changes that you outlined that are coming, those are kind of frightening. With the additional paperwork that will be involved, I think that's a way that many of our people are going to lose their health care just because of the requirements. And I do hope as we enter budget season, that you will be very honest with us about the staffing that you will need, so that we can do our best to help everyone stay eligible, that can stay eligible. But that's significant increases in time and resources for staffing. But that's significant increases in time and resources for staffing coming through. So thank you for sharing all that. That was a lot of good information. But as you said, confusing and I'm still unsure on what a lot of it will be. So Ms. Robian.
Thank you. I just want to echo my colleague and say, I'm just amazed at how much the breadth of all the work. You cover so many different areas that impact the residents of Anarundel County and how proactive that you are being in terms of what may happen in terms of health with regard to changes coming down the pike at the, you know, from the federal level. So I'm very appreciative of, you know, how much you're really looking at all of those possible changes. I probably have a million questions, but the one that's sticking in my head is you mentioned the, you know, the setting up of a school-based, school-based health center at Brooklyn Park Middle. And I'm curious, is that, is that separate from the community schools program or is that sort of connected to it? How are they related, if at all?
Yeah, I think we were intentional about looking at community schools because we know not only is the need there, but they also have funding specifically for healthcare because school-based health centers are not really high revenue generating health centers, right? They need multiple funding streams to make them possible. So we worked with AACPS to look at where are we seeing health disparities and a need for, for better access? Also, where are the community schools and where did they physically have the space, right? Every school is not the same, and so working with their facilities, folks to understand where could this even be possible to have a space for a health center? So I think they will be, we were intentional about trying to look at community schools and they happen to be one. Didn't have to be, but we think it will definitely be helpful to have those additional resources and supports. Like, for instance, they all have a full-time nurse at the community schools. So those sorts of things really make this more possible in community schools with a little less funding from the Health Department specifically or other resources. So I think it'll be a wonderful opportunity for Brooklyn Park. You know, I think we, we looked at a number of different schools that could use these services. I don't think it's ever something that will be at every school, right? When you look across jurisdictions, but yes, I think there are, if this is successful and sustainable, that we would look to grow it in the future, but we'll take it one step at a time and try to get one off the ground. Then we'll let you know how it goes. But yes, we think there's additional room for other schools to participate.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Good morning. So in your discussion about your strategic plan, one of the things that you talked about was the health equity plan. I did not hear you mention the DEI blueprint, but that is mentioned in here. Based on your budget, it looks like about 16%, roughly $15.5 million of your budget comes from the federal government. My question to you is, what concern in light of the current administration and some of the statements that they've made about those types of efforts causing a backlash on funding? What type of concern do you have that you all are including this in your program and you get a significant chunk of your funding from the federal government? What risk does that create for the county?
Yeah, that's something that we've talked to both the county and the state about because our federal funding comes through the state. It's not direct to the county. So understanding what their applications look like when we're submitting things to them, what can we use different funding sources for, what can we not use different funding sources for, has been really critical in making sure that our language aligns with what the federal government is now allowing for in those applications and in the things that we submit to the state when we're saying, oh, this is what we're doing with this funding. So we have had to make some adjustments in various plans. That's not one of them. And that funding was, the funding for that particular plan at one point was a federal grant that funded that work, right? It was CDC workforce, not workforce development. It was CDC Public Health Infrastructure Grant Dollars that allowed for that. And they came out and said, you can't use it for diversity, equity, and inclusion activities. And so we switched gears at that time. But so we've been responding to that as it comes up. But for us, making sure that we, we're staying true to the values of the Health Department. We've always talked about diversity. We've always talked about equity. We say health equity probably 60 times a day. And so making sure that we're continuing to look at where we see disparities and outcomes and how to address that. And because we are working with the public, we need a workforce that is prepared and trained to do so. And so thinking about what that means and also talking to the county about what we can do, what we can't do, what are the guardrails and having those conversations with the county executive's office and his team to make sure that we, they know what we're doing and that we are being transparent with them, but that we're also thinking about what this means from a federal perspective. So the state, most of those federal dollars, they are state grants that they apply for. We don't apply for them. And if there's something specific that they need us to do as a result of that, we do comply with what the state asks us to do.
Yeah, I guess my overarching point with it is I would dislike seeing the county lose that amount of money in federal money because of the wording, because for some reason we feel that we need to say a particular sort of thing. I had this discussion with Dr. Callie Naraman when he was the health officer. And I remember it was very important to him to use particular words, which I said, you can get the same outcome without using those words. And he said, we want to use those words. I said, okay. The problem that I, I am sort of highlighting or the concern that I'm highlighting, maybe not a problem, is they're looking for stuff like this at the federal government, like that, that much has become apparent. So I guess I'm just highlighting, it would be disappointing to see the county lose 16% of the Health Department's budget because of something like that. So I'm glad to hear you all are having those conversations.
Yeah, we are having those conversations. And our DEI blueprint plan is something that had been in the works for better than two years and was actually released in January of this year, so as the new administration was coming in. And so the timing for that plan to be released, a lot of the things that we're seeing now were not out at the time. And I, I won't lie to you and say that I might have made different decisions. I think these things are important. And I think the decisions that we may still stand, and we have to make these decisions on a day-to-day basis. This is something that we are faced with trying to understand, keeping funding for the programs that we need, but also having people understand that we are not pulling back from the activities that have always been important. And how are we standing and not just saying that we're changing because of this, but we also have to be thoughtful about that, right? We still need the funds. We still need things to come in. So this is something that we are having conversations about. The county executive's team, again, has been really helpful in, here's some things to think about. Here's some ways to word things. And if we get specific grants that come in that say we need to make changes, we do that.
Ma'am, thank you. Switching gears for a second to the strategic plan to address maternal and infant health disparities. So in there, the term that's used repeatedly is birthing people. That's what you all use. I guess as medical professionals, I want to understand from you, are there people giving birth in Anarundel County other than biological females?
So I think there's a couple of different ways to talk about that. There is biological female. There is how people identify their gender identity. And so we want our language to be as inclusive as possible to people who may be a biological female who do not identify as a woman. And so how do we use that language? And this is what our hospital partners and others are using. This actually recently came up about two to three months ago. The question was asked, what is a birthing person and what does that mean? We use birthing person, but we also use women as well. We're not inclusive to just use or exclusive to only using one term, but we do use both of those terms throughout our work to make sure that people who do not identify as women but may have been born biological females and are giving birth feel that this plan represents them as well because these disparities also happen for individuals who do not identify as women.
Okay, and I appreciate that. But from a biological, from a medical standpoint, we agree only biological females are giving birth in Anarundel County. We have not seen biological males giving birth in Anarundel County, right?
That is correct. That's the difference in women and females and male and men. Right? So thinking about that and that, and when we use that language, we are specific.
But I was noting on this handout that you all have this domestic violence and guns. You're using women and men. You're not using non-binary terms in terms of gender identification. So I guess that's where I'm trying to understand the consistency from the department's standpoint. Like, in one instance, you're using it, you're sort of going one direction. In another instance, you're going a different direction. What's, what's that?
Well, as you saw throughout my presentation, right? I highlighted men and women in different parts of the presentation. We still use those terms. There are still plenty of people who identify within those terms as, identify as a woman. That's how it, you know, that language is used. And so the consistency is a few different things. Some of it depends on the data source from which we're getting the information. So if it's not collected in a way that allows for us to be more inclusive because it's collected in just the binary of male and female or man and woman, then we have to present it as the data is collected. We can't change that because it's not necessarily collected for different gender identities. So if the different gender identities are collected, then we will present it in that way. If it's not collected, we don't change that language. And there are things where we see, for instance, suicide, we see that more in white men. So we will have that highlighted in our presentations. We see health disparities in black women or black birthing people for maternal and infant health outcomes. And so it just depends on the metric, how the information is gathered, what we are presenting, and also where it matters to the individuals who are hearing it and who we want to read it and think that we're talking to you, right? We are specifically saying this is a particular issue. So when we see domestic violence in particular, we often see that more often in heterosexual relationships where it is a male and a female or a man and a woman dynamic in that relationship. So it's important that that information actually reaches those populations. So those are all considerations that we're taking when we decide on what language to use throughout our work.
Can I keep going? Thank you. So I'm glad you talked about suicide for a second because since the county declared suicide a public health crisis and the Department of Health started passing out the literature to people who are purchasers of guns, it's important, I think, to note in your presentation that gun suicide deaths, let me say this the right way, suicides by use of a firearm appear to have decreased, is what I think your presentation was showing. Am I accurate in that?
You are accurate.
Okay. But on the flip side, the deaths by a firearm that are relating to homicide are, as you noted, higher this year than they were last year. So what I'm trying to understand is, it looks like we did have some success to a certain degree on one part of that program, but on another part of that program, it seems that we're not having as much success. And it seems like we're spending a lot more money on the part of the program where we're having less success. And I don't think it's costing you nearly as much on the handouts that we're doing on the suicide piece. So that's where I'm trying to understand, what are we seeing in terms of a return on our investment for what started off as gun locks, but now looks like you guys are giving away gun boxes in addition, which are far more expensive than a gun lock? So I guess I'm trying to understand that return on investment because of the amount of money that we continue to put into this program.
Well, the gun locks and the gun lock boxes are grant funds that are put into this program. So they are specifically for those uses. It could not be reallocated to do something else. We've applied for those funds to do those things. So that is not county general funds or state funds that could be put to something else. So that's one. For suicide prevention, yes, that's one piece of it, firearm suicides. But we also have a tremendous amount of work that's happening around our suicide prevention work that's not related to firearms. So we have a suicide prevention summit that we've had for the last two years where we have hundreds of people coming out to get education on this. It's in the presentation, so you can take a look at that. We have a suicide prevention coordinator who's been with the department now for about two years, specifically looking at different ways of preventing suicide in various populations and understanding what's happening. And so while when we're looking at gun violence and we're talking about suicides that happen via firearm, we're also looking at many different types of ways that individuals may attempt suicide. And so that's just one piece of it, but there is other funding that's going to suicide prevention work that's happening. We were at the Out of Darkness Walk and doing that work and making sure that we are visible to people. So there's a lot of work happening. And because the suicide prevention coordinator is relatively new within the department, and that's an investment we've made in the last two years, that program is still ramping up quite a bit, but they've been quite successful in getting things out, that mental health first aid training, understanding what it looks like. So when we talk about the specific dollars that are being spent, I think you have to be really inclusive of different programs that are happening. So our community health ambassadors, that funding, they look at things like mental health first aid training and how to make sure that the community understands and what they're looking at. When we're talking about maternal and infant health, when we say mental health disparities and differences that we're seeing there, we're also addressing depression, suicidality, all of that. So it's woven into many different places that may not be as cut and dry because our gun violence work is very specific, right? And it is, we're doing this, we're spending this, and it's not dispersed throughout different programs. But I would say that suicide is different because we are looking at it in a number of different ways. Also, the Mental Health Agency is doing a tremendous amount of work in this space. And so thinking about the return on investment, I don't think you can just look at specific dollars to the Health Department. I would say you need to look at the Mental Health Agency and the funding that the county puts there. You'd have to look at what's in our behavioral health work separate from gun violence. So I don't know that that's a complete categorization of how we spend suicide dollars related to suicide because it's woven into many different places.
Okay, well, I guess, let me ask Ms. Follow-up because I think that was excellent. I appreciate that perspective, that broader lens. When we are looking at gun violence as a category of deaths in Anarundel County, with the numbers going down for suicide, I think we all would applaud that. That's what we all want to see. With the numbers increasing for homicides and for other uses of firearms in, that are causing death, whether it's accidental discharge, mass shootings, the other categories that you all look at, what are we, what are we seeing in terms of the money that we're putting into those efforts and the results for that? That's what I'm specifically trying to get at.
Yeah, so if we're asking specifically about where we're putting those dollars, a big chunk of that funding has been put into having staff in the Health Department lead the gun violence work, which includes things like the gun locks, these community meetings, the beautification projects and other things that are not just violence interruption. But there's also the Violence Interruption Program specifically put into Eastport. And I like to be really, thoughtful about how we talk about that because it's one program in one neighborhood. So when we looked at this specific slide of violence reduction, I'm going to go back.
You missed it.
In the area that we are specifically targeting, this work is not across the county, right? This is in a neighborhood. This is their target area. We have seen a decrease in violence in this area. So I think that the money that's being spent there, and you'll see when that annual report comes out, is actually working to decrease violence in that area. We don't have these programs in every neighborhood that has experienced increased level of violence across the county. So this program is not going to solve the gun violence that we're seeing in the northern part of the county. It's not necessarily going to address what we're seeing in West County, right? And that's why we're looking to actually expand this particular model into the western part of the county and hope that we see the same sort of outcome later on. And I wouldn't say that we've seen an increase just yet. Year-to-date, it is higher. The year is not over. And so this is a snapshot of where we are at a moment in time. As this finishes, we'll take a look. That's compared to last year. We also look back several years to see what the trends are, right? We don't count any one year as a trend. So what are we seeing? And I think gun violence and the work that we do in our task force is one piece of this, right? We're not all of it. We can't do it all. It is a portion of the work that has to happen, but we have many different partners represented on the Gun Violence Intervention Team. So thinking about libraries, thinking about public safety, all of those individuals, the school system, everyone is a part of this work. What Crisis Intervention is doing is a part of this work. And so I think when you say, what are we seeing for our return on investment? I think in this particular neighborhood where we are investing specific dollars to try to reduce violence, you are seeing that outcome. You're not going to see that represented. And if you want to give us more money to do it in many more places, we're happy to do it and figure out how to make it work and to expand this. But in order to do that, you do have to invest more to expand it and to make it work. So I think we are seeing it where it's being invested. And that's, that's my opinion on that, but I would also encourage you to read the annual report when it comes out.
Can I ask another question? Or do you want to let somebody else go?
Let me let somebody else go. We'll come back to you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to go back to the very beginning of your presentation. You noted on the Medicaid renewal that there are 331,577 folks in the state. Do you have any idea, even if it's a rough number, in Anarundel County?
I have to look at the specific one you're referencing. Sorry to tell you. Oh, well, so in the county, if you're looking at the very, this first slide here. Yeah, so that 320 is inclusive of that 25,000 individuals for the Medicaid expansion adults. So that's the same category of folks. So for Anarundel County, it's roughly 25,000 people.
Okay, perfect. I didn't see the interplay between the two. Madam Chair, may I continue? On the leading cause of death topic, we touched on, or at least I touched on this the last time we sat as the Board of Health, and cancer, cancer is the leading cause on slide, whatever slide number this is, with 1,000. slide number this is, with 1,073 in 2023. Is that trending, is that number trending larger year over year for cancer-related deaths? And do we have a heat map?
We do have some heat maps for certain types of cancer, right? So when you say cancer, that's all types. And we specifically, within the department, work with breast and cervical, lung, and some prostate. So those are the areas where we're actually doing active outreach and trying to get people in. Of course, we know there are many, many different types of cancer, and so we have a Cancer, Conquer Cancer Advisory Council that looks at how we can provide better education in other places. So there are heat maps for some. I'd have to look back specifically to look at the trend for that one, to look at cancer. So some of them stand out in my head as different types specifically, but overall, cancer as a whole, I'd have to look back. And we can get that answer to you to show you the trends for the last five years. That's easily pulled.
That would be great. And I don't know if there's a privacy issue, but if we could include the heat map, maybe even for the top two, since they're more medically related, not so much the accidents, I think. And the reason I'm asking this question is when we sat last time as the Board of Health, I had previously heard from a community in Severna Park who is, for whatever reason, has a large number of women who are battling breast cancer currently, and they have an invested interest in pursuing grant money for further studying, but need some data to back it up.
Yeah, and we've been in touch with that particular group. The data that they're looking for, we cannot provide because it is too specific to a very small area and a small number of folks, so then it can become identifiable. So their specific request, we can't really support. We have shared with them the data that we have and what we are able to specifically share, and sometimes it's difficult without knowing family histories and other risk factors to always say that it is environmental. It could be, but there's so many different causes and things that lead to cancer that it, sometimes that one-to-one is not necessarily what people think it is on the surface, but to get to that deeper information, they'd actually have to talk to the individuals, know their family histories, understand their individual risk factors, et cetera. But we have been in contact with that group, and we cannot provide what they are asking for because it is too small of a number and it's identifiable.
But we could have a heat map for the council, just with generic. I think that would, at least I find that that would be helpful. And in that same topic of leading cause of death, the accidental poisoning, what exactly is that? I mean, I'm thinking like ingestion of chemicals in the house by, I mean, what is accidental poisoning?
Yeah, it's really all of the above, right? If you've taken too much of something, so this is not thinking about opioid overdose necessarily, but if you ingested something that you were supposed to ingest, but you took too much of it, and it's accidental and not in an attempt to harm oneself, that sort of thing, that's this category. And we can do a bit of a deeper dive. This one was new for us this year, so we started taking a look at that. And Donna Perkins, our Director of Assessment and Planning, has been looking into, what does this mean? And so the definitions for that, we could also provide you after this to make sure.
Okay. Yeah, I thought that was new, that stood out to me, and I just wanted to know more detail. Madam Chair? Moving on to the maternal health dashboard, I love that you all have put this together. I used to ask a lot of questions in this subject area, but one that I wanted to focus on, the tab at the top with smoking, does that include vaping? Is it smoking of all kinds?
I'd have to look back at the definition for that particular metric. It should be inclusive of smoking of all kinds, but we could take a look to make sure that it actually is. I don't, I'll ask Donna if she knows that one off the top of her head. Nope. We'll have to double check.
Okay. No, I think it's really important that we are tracking this data and information for our expectant mothers and for the positive outcomes for babies born in the county as well. But I'm going to use that to dovetail into vape, more vaping questions. Vaping seems to be a trend that's not going away, particularly with our youth. Are we tracking hospital rates for vaping-related respiratory distress? Do we have a lot of information on the popcorn lung that I've heard about? What are we doing with our partners in the school system to bring education to our young people in the same way that we did with smoking? Because I don't see a lot of kids smoking cigarettes, but I'm hearing and seeing vaping.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start with your last question first. So we do have a partnership right now with AACPS to run a contest with students to actually create campaigns around anti-vaping, things that students would participate in, they would create them, and then they're eligible to win iPads. So we're working on that as we speak with them. So that's one piece. Popcorn lung, we really have to have a better understanding of how to collect that data, and I don't know that I've seen it collected yet in a way that is reported out to us that we could report it out to you. Depending on what people are smoking, we do have, we're tracking cannabis-related hospitalizations. So if you're vaping cannabis, that's one thing. If you're vaping nicotine, that's a different question. And I don't know that we have specific data that says that this is how it would be classified outside of you came in for, right? Are you coming in with a cough? Is this something that looks like a respiratory illness and/or infection? And so then being able to tie that directly back to vaping might be a little difficult for us because of how it's coded. When you go to the hospital and say, I'm having shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, a cough, right? It may not necessarily jump off the page with the coding as a vaping issue, and then it would also mean that they would have to say, this is what I'm doing. So I hope that we'll have better data in the future, but that's something, I'll, we'll look into that and see if there's anything at all we can kind of correlate and pull together. But part of it is how people present when they're going for care to see whether or not that, I have not seen any data on popcorn lung. I am familiar with it, but I haven't seen anything coming from the state or anywhere else just yet on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. One final category, Madam Chair, if I may. For the Mental Health Agency, it seems as though the numbers on the graph are going down as far as the number of calls, but that's more related to the number of officers we have, not necessarily the number of calls for crisis response, I think.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask Adrian Mechner and/or Jen Corbin to come up to answer that question about the Mental Health Agency.
Kind of, is the answer, actually. Yes, some of it has to do with our ability of our follow-ups that we can do. We were, we're doing more follow-ups than calls coming in, partly because we can't go on as many active calls because of the reduction in our officer numbers to keep our clinicians safe while we're out. We are still seeing an increase in the calls, it's just looking a little different in what we can do for the follow-ups. So the number you saw was going down is because of our follow-up out versus in, if that makes sense. So the calls coming in and what we can do may have to push over to another department versus what we can do on our follow-up side.
That makes perfect sense. And it seems like, particularly the youth, once they are in treatment, they're having more positive outcomes and stabilizing, but the calls that you're going on are increasing in acuity and severity.
Yeah, and that's another really good point. The length of time we're staying on a call has really, really gone up. Part of that is just the acuity level of what we're seeing and the way that we're approaching our calls for service. So you talk about gun violence, you talk about dangerousness. I just want to remind everybody, that's not just guns. We're facing more and more knives on our calls for service. So our ability to be safe on the scene, calls that we can't go on necessarily right away because we don't have the officers in the building anymore to do it, is really impacting what we can do. So when we think about violence, I also want to think outside of the gun realm and look also at other weapons that we're seeing in the community and the things that we're encountering. So some of that also is our ability to go on more calls because of the dangerousness and having to kind of put a priority level on what we go on right now.
Are you seeing a change in the demographic of calls? Are we going older, younger, male, female, or is it pretty consistent in the variety from last time we met with you?
I would, I would say there's a variety, but we are seeing increased aggression in the home, whether that is domestic violence or parent-child. We're seeing a little bit more increase on the adolescent side in regards to family members and safety factors there. And it, it hurts us a little because we have to start patrol first for safety factors. So our ability to come in and, and not be so traumatizing to the youth that we're dealing with is a little harder right now because of the increase in aggression that we're seeing. So I would say it's still the same across the board, but again, the high acuity in our older adolescents, and I'd say also middle age, but I couldn't say that it's one gender or anything like that at this point.
Appreciate that information. I hope one day we'll get here and numbers will be drastically down because they are just drastically down. But thank you for your continued work. I know it's a really difficult job that you do.
Thank you.
Did you have your light on, Ms. Picker?
I had my light on. I thought so. Ms. Picker.
Well, first, Dr. Giddens, it's always a pleasure to have you and your entire department here. It's always stunning, the depth and breadth of not only the work that the Health Department does, but the way you can communicate it to all of us and answer all of our questions. So thank you, and thank you for your Phone a Friend team, who you haven't really had to access that much today. So, but I really want to make sure everyone in the audience who's sitting through all of our questions and the presentation know that you are appreciated and the work is stunning. So thank you. And then I just wanted to note to my colleague that maybe those gun locks and gun boxes are also reducing suicide by firearm.
I always do, always do.
Mr. Volke.
Thank you. Quick question. Did we track opioid deaths before 2019?
Not to my knowledge, but I'll have to check in with the team, ask Sandy O'Neal, our Director of Behavioral Health Services, to come up. I joined the department in 2020.
Right, yeah. I, I heard your statement. You said when we started tracking this in 2019, I'd be surprised that we didn't track it before then? We did? Okay, thank you. I thought, I was pretty sure the last administration tracked it because that was a big public health situation that they were dealing with. I know Councilman Smith was on the council at that time. So I guess what I'm asking this question for is, is there a way to look at that data and see where we are in terms of a trend over really the last 10 or 12 years to see what that trend has looked like? Because obviously it was going up, up, up for a long time. Now we're all happy to see it's coming down. So can we get that sort of metric where we can actually see some more longitudinal data on that?
Yeah, I'll have to look at it because I, again, not being in the department prior to 2020, how that was being measured, what exactly we were looking at, and if this was in combination with the Police Department, which helps provide some of this now, right? It's been changed and refined a bit over the years, right? We've gotten better at this. And so I don't know if a metric that we were tracking in 2017 is the same metric to make it an apples-to-apples comparison or not, but that's just something I don't know. So I'll have to take a look at that and let you know.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you all so much. This was excellent. We are, we really appreciate all of your team coming out and spending so much of their morning with us, and always a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Is there any other business to be brought before the Board of Health? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Allison Picker.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Anarundel County Board of Health is adjourned until May 2026. And we are scheduled to take a very small break. I think people have already jumped up, so let's give it just a couple of minutes for everyone to get a blanket like I did because it's freezing in here, and we'll be back in just a moment. Yeah, I had Brian bring me my, right? It's getting that happy, happy medium. Thank you all for being patient with us. I think we all got something hot to drink so that we can warm up a little bit. It's very cold up here. The October 14th, 2025 work session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all electronic devices remain in silent mode. Do any of my colleagues have any questions before we begin? Seeing no one, all right. First bill up for grabs is Bill Number 8325. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Joining me at the table will be Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney, Billy Penley, our Controller, David Gregory from our bond counsel firm, McKenon, Shelton &amp; Hen, and Chris Sheehan from Mizrow Finance, who's the Managing Director of Public Finance there. Bill 8325 seeks to issue some refunding bonds for the Arundel Gateway Special District, which, special taxing district, in an amount not to exceed $12,300, $12,360,000. The bonds were initially issued in 2014. The bondholder no longer desires to hold them, so they will be issuing some refunding bonds. There will be some small savings to the property owners in that district in their property taxes for the special tax assessment. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I can turn it over to the panel, who's much more knowledgeable on this issue.
Okay. Mr. Volke.
Thank you. I just want you to explain it in laypeople's terms because I'm not following exactly what you're saying. You said the bondholder doesn't want to hold the bond anymore, but there's no cost to us. Just walk me through exactly how that works so that I'm not as confused as I am right now. Okay, thanks.
Button? Okay. So, hi. Good morning. So the, the district, let's, I'll kind of, we can go back in time here and, to answer that question, which takes us back to the original ordinance, Bill 1612 from 2012, which established this special taxing district and provided that the county was authorized to issue up to $25 million of bonds for public improvements for the, I think the name has changed over the years, but the Arundel Gateway Project. And in accordance with that ordinance, the county did issue bonds. They were not sold in a public bond offering. It was a new project shovel in the ground where that, at that time, wasn't the right path for getting the cash to do the project. So initial, initially, there were investors that invested in the bonds, bond, you know, large investors, and they held the bonds. Eventually, they were sold to another investor who currently holds the bond, and that entity actually also provides a debt service reserve fund guarantee on the bonds. So they carry an obligation to pay the bonds if they needed to in the event of a default. They also hold the bonds on their balance sheet as an investment since they own the bonds that the county initially issued in 2012. The bonds were issued under an indenture of trust in 2012 or 14? Let's see here, 14, okay. So we got the, the ordinance passed in '12, took some time to get the deal actually going. So in '14, we issued, the county issued the bonds under an indenture. And the bonds were issued, obviously pursuant to those provisions. The bondholder holds those bonds, and the indenture was set up basically as a mechanism to get the cash in the door to do these public infrastructure improvements, but not necessarily as a long-term 20- or 30-year bond deal. They were, the indenture envisioned that the bonds would be re-marketed in a public market transaction or refinanced in a public market transaction, which is what we are proposing under this ordinance. And the bondholder didn't have an expectation to be a long-term holder in the project. So the, that's, that hopefully answers the question, but the, the initial investors, actually, I shouldn't use the word initial, the investors in the transaction are looking at this indenture. They realize that it's not a long-term bond deal. Is the time right to make this a refunding into a long-term public finance bond transaction? There are savings that are possible. That investor gets to walk away from the transaction, get paid off. The, the, the landowners who pay the special taxes, which fund, of course, the debt service on the bonds, would have some reduction in their payments based on the savings that are currently being, currently being estimated.
Madam Chair? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I just have to ask, before I can ask you a follow, who are the landowners who are currently paying the debt servicing on the bonds? Are they county residents, or are they businesses, or are they something else?
Combination of the two.
Combo.
Yeah.
Okay. And when you say that, let me explain how I understand this, and you tell me where I'm right, wrong, or otherwise, okay? Basically, we had obligations, we had authorization to issue up to 22 million. We didn't issue the whole 22, we only issued 12, 12.36, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. So this 12.36 is what we actually issued, the balance was never issued. And then of the 12.36, there's somebody holding that right now, and we're going to potentially pay them off so that there's no debt service on that bond. What's the interest rate that these folks are paying? I'm just trying to understand, like, what's the upside for the county on this?
Yeah. Chris, can I pass that one to you?
Absolutely, great question. So the current rate of interest on the bond is 6%. It's a taxable bond when it was issued. So, you know, on their balance sheet, they're recognizing, I think, a sizable loss as it's being carried on the equity side. It's not sitting in a municipal bond side of the initial investor. So they're looking to, and they, you know, the indenture allows for them to sell their bond. And that's essentially what we're doing here, is we're replacing the current, the current bonds with new tax-exempt bonds at a lower rate of interest that will both refinance into lower debts, annual debt service, as well as pay off the existing bondholder.
Okay. So it definitely helps the bondholder, because they get this off their books.
Correct.
Okay. And it helps the county, because instead of us paying 6% interest, we're only going to be paying a tax-exempt rate of...
Right now, about 5%, 5%.
Okay, so we're going to have a 1% savings on that.
Correct.
But somebody still has to pay that. It's no longer going to be paid by the small subset. Now it's going to work into the general county bonds?
No, it's a special taxing district. So this is a supplemental tax that each of the homeowners agreed and agreed to, were provided disclosure about, and have been paying since the original transaction. Now, the original transaction, it was Greenberg-Givens who owned the land, so they were paying all of the debt service. As the lots were developed, each homeowner ultimately began to pay their prorata share of the improvements relative to, you know, their particular property, and that will continue to remain the same.
Okay. So from the county's standpoint, we're not recognizing any real savings, because we're just sort of a holding entity in a sense?
Correct.
Other people are paying, other people are getting the money, it's just passing through us.
That's correct.
Okay, got you. And so the real savings is for the county residents, who are going to save approximately a 1% interest rate if they refi this and it goes out.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
This sounds good.
Yeah.
That was very helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. I think that does it. Thank you all for sitting patiently through hearing all of our health data this morning.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I enjoyed listening to it.
It's very informative.
It is, it is. Makes me proud of our county.
So, all right, next up is Bill Number 7925, bless you, 7925, Maintenance Code, Air Conditioning and Multiple Dwellings. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Give me one second here. Joining me at the table will be Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law, our Supervising County Attorney, and Tony Gedden, our Health Officer, and Don Kurdiyan, our Director of Environmental Health. Bill 7925 came about as a result of a couple instances over the last couple summers where we had large residential property owners, multifamily property owners, whose air conditioning failed for multiple days or weeks at the, during some of the hottest days of the summer. And the residents didn't really have any other options. The county came in and provided temporary relief to those residents. But this bill sets up an enforcement mechanism for the Health Department and the Environmental Health Division. Basically, what it does is if a landlord offers air conditioning, and that's, I want to emphasize if, we're not requiring air conditioning be offered in every rental property, but we're saying if the property offers air conditioning, it must be maintained and functioning. And if it does not, the county has the ability to go in and find the property owner and provide temporary relief to the residents and recoup that cost. So that's essentially what the bill does. I'm happy to answer any questions. We have our panel of experts here as well, who can answer some questions.
So, I, one of the, on our health presentation we received, one of the ones, things that came out was heat-related incidents. And I know we had some, I know specifically in an apartment complex in my district this summer that had an air conditioning outage, we did have people who were taken to the hospital for heat-related responses based on that. So is this an issue that y'all have seen? When you look at your heat-related incidents, have there been a connection between the apartment buildings?
I think when we look at our incidents overall, we're able to understand in the data some of the zip codes and understand where we have more people renting and we have homeownership. So that's specific to know if, you know, these apartment complexes are driving those numbers. We can't necessarily say that, but we definitely have a better understanding of where we see more incidents as it relates to renters versus homeowners. And then I'll let Don, if there's anything you'd like to add to that.
Yeah, no, and that facility was one where, you know, we had heat indexes over 100 for that two-week period, and there was no relief, you know, given. And what this bill was trying to do is to give us some enforcement tools to be able to get relief and make the owners of the facilities either get the repairs done or to provide an additional type of cooling.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This issue was quite prevalent for District 2 residents this summer, and we dealt with it from a constituent service. There were, every apartment complex handles it differently. Some wanted, in order to receive maintenance, like on a weekend for their AC, they want it, they would only do it if you had medical, some sort of medical release from the doctor that it was, it was not great. But the way the bill is written, it says that the, we're looking at that 78 degrees, being able to cool to 78 degrees. But on 105-degree day, that's really difficult for even the best air conditioning. So are we, is that the best way to phrase that and work through this issue in a practical sense?
I mean, when we looked at some of the neighboring jurisdictions that also have that 78 degrees in there, and that's where, you know, we were looking at as a comparison. And that, you know, we also have on there, on those very hot days, not only 78 degrees, but 15 degrees less than what the temperature, the high temperature is. So, we know that in some of these apartment complexes, especially those that are multiple stories, lowering the temperature to 78 degrees on the upper stories is very difficult to do. So it also, in the bill, it says, or 15 degrees less than the high temperature.
Okay. So it's an either-or?
Yes.
It's cumbersome in the way it's written.
Some of that is to account for the really high temperatures. We know that we're seeing more days over 90 degrees and over 100 degrees. So you're correct, cooling systems, if it's 105 outside, getting it to 78 is a lot, but getting it 15 degrees colder than 130 would then be the goal on those really hot days. But typically, in the days where it's not that warm, 78 degrees is where we see less health issues happening for individuals indoors. And then also taking into account things like the heat index. So there's the actual temperature, and then there's humidity that goes along with that that makes it feel warmer than it might actually be from a temperature perspective. So I think those were all things that we were taking into account. Ethan, I don't know if there's...
No, I think they summed it up pretty well. But it is, it isn't either-or, there are neighboring jurisdictions that have very similar provision to that.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, what I don't see in this legislation is a landlord who's making best efforts to resolve this, but is not able to be, you know, get it resolved immediately, right? This looks like this is either you're in violation or you're not. And if you're in violation, now you're subject to the departments, as it says, sole discretion to order whatever methods you all determine, is the alternative cooling mechanism. That could be an extraordinarily expensive mechanism, but you have that sole discretion. And if they fail to do it, you then have the sole discretion to execute that yourself and charge them back for it. So, I'm trying to understand the reasonableness of this from the standpoint of a landowner, property owner, anybody who's doing business in this county, who is going to say, okay, I'm really trying. Like, I've called, I've talked to 10 different HVAC companies. I can't get anybody out here on an emergency basis. I'm doing everything I can. If they're in violation, they're in violation, they're subject to what you all say. And again, this is my problem with this sidewalk bill that we're doing, it's my problem with this tree pruning bill. It gives all the power to the people in the department, and we have to hope, and the citizens of this county have to hope, that you all are going to be reasonable. Because if you're not, well, then the code gives you absolute discretion. You can do whatever you want. How do we deal with that? How do we put in some provision for reasonableness in here? Or do you all just think that's not necessary, we don't need to have that provision?
Well, part of, part of the reasoning was, what we saw in the instances that we were dealing with this summer was the apartment complexes were not making an effort to give some relief.
Okay.
So we wanted some authority where we could institute what relief we feel would be something that would be, so that the people would be safe.
But couldn't you just say, if they're not making best efforts, then this applies?
Yeah. And we would, you know, when we look at our enforcement, we always take all that into consideration. And in this particular case, we did take that into consideration, because there, what happened in this, in the one particular case that Ms. Homer brought up, was they had a sewage backup that then shorted out a control panel. And they had, they were having trouble finding a control panel. Everybody was having trouble finding parts for HVAC this summer. But all relief that was being given for this particular case was either a fan in a 100-degree apartment complex, which was not providing any relief, and then, or bottles of water. In that case, the county recognized that there was still a safety issue, and then provided some cooling, a cooling center that was close by, as well as a bus that was out there so that people could come and get some relief. So we were just, we, this just gives us some tools that we can institute that looking for relief in cases where no one is making an effort.
I understand that. But I guess my question remains, couldn't you put something in here that says, if the owner of a multiple dwelling supplies air conditioning units, blah, 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 the air conditioning shall be kept in good working order? I want to go. And then for your portion where it talks about, I don't know exactly where you put it, because I'm kind of doing this on the fly, but I think you need, I would be more comfortable if you had something in here that said, in the event that the landowner is not making best efforts to rectify the situation, then in that event, the county has the ability to come in. It would probably have to be, probably have to be in the failure to comply, but you might really need it under the air conditioning section too, just because of the way this is written, so.
It would probably be that section 608.3, alternative cooling relief, where it says...
Okay, okay. I guess my question to you all is, from the administration and the department's standpoint, are you supportive of that type of language for an amendment? Or are you opposed to anything that would give sort of an out for the landowner to say they're doing their best? Are you supportive?
I mean, I would, I think we would be certainly comfortable with some sort of language about making best efforts. I think the point was made that the situation that gave rise to this was, best efforts were not made. This was multiple summers with the same property.
Okay. And I think there's sort of a fair compromise in here to look at this and say, if there is a repeat offender that you all are kind of identifying and over and over saying, this particular property manager is not doing the things that we expect, then maybe you do need some enforcement mechanisms. But generally speaking, if people are doing the best they can, or this is the first time it's come up, this seems a bit draconian to go all the way to the end. And I understand the department's position of, we try to be reasonable, but I don't mean this with any offense to you, I may believe that while you're in the position, I don't know who's going to have your position next. And this code's going to live on long after I'm here and you're here, and that's going to be something that everybody has to deal with, so. Okay. I'll probably bring that amendment forward.
Ms. Raffin.
So I think I might be looking at this sort of a different angle, or maybe an opposing angle for Mr. Volkey. My concern is that we get relief to people that are living in the conditions that this bill, you know, anticipates, regardless of the best efforts. Obviously, you want the apartment complex to be making best efforts, but I'm also concerned about, I was just going back, I don't know why, I remember it so well, but I remember in 2012, there was a really, really intense heat wave, and I had lived in a perfectly air-conditioned house, but every time I had to go outside, it was just miserable. I don't know if you, anyone else remembers 2012 specifically? And we had, you know, I think we had a string of a week or maybe two weeks of days where it didn't drop below 100 degrees, you know, during, for the daytime highs, and it didn't drop below 90 during even the overnight hours. So, you know, considering that happened 13 years ago, and we're on a trajectory where, you know, temperatures are even higher now, or at least we can anticipate even higher temperatures now because of, you know, what we've seen with respect to climate change. If we're looking, if we're saying that 15 degrees below, you know, a high temperature, even at 100 degrees, that's still only 85. At 105 degrees, that's 90 degrees. And is that, is that enough to get people in safe conditions? So my concern was actually, is the 15 degrees enough? And maybe we could distinguish between the, you know, the consequences that we put in place for a, you know, a property owner making their best effort versus when the Health Department would step in and provide relief, that those don't necessarily have to, you know, be 100% parallel tracks. Because, you know, I think we've recognized that, and you acknowledged that, you know, in some situations, an apartment complex or a property owner could be making absolutely their best efforts, but they might not be able to fix it because, you know, if there's a massive heat wave, everybody and their cousins trying to get their air conditionings fixed that they might have been putting off, or, you know, the parts are unavailable, whatever. They're making their best efforts, but we still need relief. And so I'm kind of thinking that maybe those two things should be on separate tracks.
Yeah, the relief question is one that I think we would, we'd have to really think about, because your unit could be functioning completely appropriately and it's still hot, right? Like, the way that they function, the age of the unit, things like that. So even knowing that it might be 90 degrees, but it's not that your air conditioning is not working, it's just working over time, and it's not...
It's not designed to cool for extended periods when it's 105 or 100 degrees outside.
Right. So I think that question for how many resources we actually have in the county to provide cooling when the unit's working, and there's nothing that we're going out to enforce, but if we had that in there, your home isn't cooling, what does that then leave us to providing for folks, even if their air conditioning is working? Would be one of the questions that I would want to talk to the team about, because I think that opens it up. It is a safety concern, and that's where we really think those cooling centers, if you're not getting cool enough, we really need you to come out versus there's something that your landlord is not doing for you, so we're going to try to provide some relief. And hopefully, if you have an appropriate unit, it will cool a bit more at night, so you'll find some relief. But if it's not working at all, you're likely not going to get any relief during any hours of that day. So, that would be my concern about, if we broaden it, that it's possible that your unit's working just fine, and they don't, even HVAC professionals don't recommend that you turn it down to like 70 when it's 100 degrees outside, right? They don't recommend that. So figuring out how to balance that would be, but you're correct, people are still in a dangerous situation, and how do we get those resources out, that bus, the cooling centers, to make sure people are aware of them, because it is still dangerous.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to confirm that the bill focuses on more apartment complexes with multiple dwellings and not like a townhouse rental, because in a townhouse scenario, the renter is in like, more in control of the air conditioning versus a multi-dwelling unit where it's managed by the larger corporation.
Yeah, it's the licensed multiple dwellings, as well as if, if air conditioning is provided by, by the complex. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How many incidents were called in last year to units?
13.
13. Do you know the year before?
11.
11. So on average, we're probably somewhere in that double, low double digits of issues each year. And these, the 11 before, are they similar, the same individuals that happened in 2013?
There was the same complex. And we've had, we've had, we had problems with heat and water in that complex as well.
Okay. The, we sent out emails on the cooling sites throughout, and buses. One of your measures, when you said the county offers an alternative, potentially could be like a cooling bus, or something like that. And then that cost could be... Um, and, and then that cost could be sent to the, to the property owner?
Yes.
Uh, if it's not one of the pre-selected ones that we already have in place, you're not passing that cost off to any, any specific, uh, okay, landowners. Uh, and, and what, what's, is there a reverse to this? Is there a, like, if, if my colleagues from District Six is freezing, for example? Uh, is, if the temperature drops below, you know, zero degrees and heating doesn't work, uh, is there, is there an effort or someone has thought about, what does that look like? Uh, because people's health and safety could also be, uh, compromised with that, just curious.
In the property maintenance code, there is already an established number, sixty-eight degrees for heat. So there is already a number. That, what this bill is doing is, is just trying to bring air conditioning and establishing a, a, a number, a temperature that is what we feel is safe, where there is already one established in the property maintenance code for heat, which is sixty-eight degrees.
I ask, um, and I think that's it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick follow-up to Mr. Smith's question. So you say that there is already a heat number in the property maintenance code, but is there an enforcement component like this in the property maintenance code?
Yeah, there's, there is also enforcement code already for heat. So we can do enforcement for heat. We don't, we don't have the provision in there that we can, if we, if the county decides to provide alternate heating that we charge them. So this, this bill is slightly different than what's already for heat. It just says that they either, they have to bring the temperature to sixty-eight degrees or provide an alternate heating.
And what's the penalty for that? What's the enforcement?
It's the same as this, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollar fine for the first offense.
Gotcha, yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Pickard.
I just, I just want to note for my colleagues that what we bumped into with, in regards to constituent services, is because this code provision doesn't exist, we weren't, we didn't feel there was anything we could do other than, you know, call the property management and to try to advocate, which, you know, isn't going to do us any good. There's no code provision. So the, the numbers that, of complaints are probably not equivalent to what is actually happening in the world.
So, and I just want to add, we have mentioned that we have a repeat offender in my district. I want to praise the health department and the Office of Emergency Management of how well they responded. There was a cooling bus there for all people. They opened a special, um, cooling center and, and provided transportation there to people. But it should be, also be noted, the cooling center was opened at one of our senior center, senior centers, which meant other services had to be shut down, and the seniors were not happy. That bingo night was closed and things like that. So when these things happen, it has a ripple effect on other things that we do within the county. So, but, um, everyone, um, on the team was great in responding to this and trying to make the best of it when the, um, property owners didn't necessarily step up as they should have, so thank you. All right, I, I think that's all for y'all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms., Dr. Giddon.
Thank you.
So, all right, next up is Bill number seventy-eight twenty-five, the Odenton Mark TOD and Maryland One Seventy Widening and Campus Improvement Capital Projects. Mr. Hunt.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Joining me at the table is Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney, Naomi Carrigan, our Senior Capital Budget Analyst, David Braun, our Engineering Administrator from the Department of Public Works, and Andrew Littl, the Associate Vice President for Learning and Resource Management at Anorundel County Community College. Um, so this bill, uh, amends the capital budget for the current fiscal year, transfers an appropriation of funding source in the Odenton Mark Todd Development Phase One and Two A and Maryland One Seventy Widening Capital Projects. It also amends the capital budget by making supplementary appropriations of funds to Maryland Two Fourteen and Lockhaven Road Projects and the Campus Improvement, uh, Capital Projects, and amends the capital and capital projects bond ordinance for the current fiscal year. Um, in a little more detail, it takes seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from general county bonds and other state grants for the Odenton Mark Todd, uh, Development Phase Project and twenty-two thousand from the developer contribution to general county bonds for Maryland, uh, One Seventy Widening, and makes supplementary appropriation of four hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars in county general bonds, uh, for Maryland Two Fourteen and fifty-seven thousand five hundred in community college pay-go funds for the, uh, campus improvement projects. And I have my panel here, who I'm sure would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions? Oh, come up with one question, they've been sitting here for a long time waiting for us. Come on, Mr. Volkey, you can do it. Give him one question. He doesn't have anything.
Just, I, I'll ask one. This is not like a big deal question, but I'm curious. This is not going to increase anything in the county budget. This simply is just us moving money from one allocated source to another, right? Or is this new money that we're allocating for the first time? And if I ask that badly, rephrase it however you want.
Uh, Naomi McAllister, Office of Budget. From an affordability standpoint, general county bonds and pay-go is actually a reduction, so it's a savings to the county. There is some shuffling around, and we are increasing grant funding. So from a budget perspective, it's increasing, but from an affordability county standpoint, it's decreasing.
Because these are grants that we did not anticipate at the time that we did the budget, and now they're coming in to substitute for other sources?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, that was my question this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey, we appreciate you. So thank you all very much. All right. Next is Bill number eighty-one twenty-five. Um, yes, we do. Um, adequate transportation facilities, Mr. Hunt.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Joining me at the table will be Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Greg Swain, our County Attorney, Sarah Fowler, our Planning Administrator for Transit Development in the Office of Planning and Zoning, uh, David Braun from the Department of Public Works, our Engineering Administrator, and Brian Ulrich, our Planning Administrator from the Office of Transportation. I do have a presentation that I will go through momentarily. Um, just table set a little bit. So Bill eighty-one twenty-five is designed to modernize our transportation adequate public facilities code, uh, which has not been updated in nearly twenty years. I will ensure that development as it occurs, uh, roads, sidewalks, bike facilities, and transit around it can safely and efficiently handle the, uh, new demand from folks that are utilizing those, uh, opportunities. Um, before I get into it too much, I just want to address a couple of things upfront. One, uh, it was brought to our attention that the date for the grandfathering clause in the bill, um, has passed, so we fully recognize that's not workable, so we'll have an amendment to make it, um, at least, uh, move the effective date to at least March, uh, if not later, uh, to ensure that projects that are already in review aren't caught midstream, uh, with any potential changes in the code. And that will, uh, clarify expectations, uh, for both the public and the development community. We've also heard, uh, from some stakeholders, concerns about costs that new multimodal tests could add. Um, I want to emphasize the intent here is not to increase that burden, but to create predictable and proportional standards uh, to replace the uncertainty that exists with what we have now. Um, so that way developers will know what, upfront, what's expected, um, and they'll have flexible options, uh, to meet those obligations. Um, at the public hearing on October twentieth, we will ask for this bill to be held as we continue to work, uh, with stakeholders and, um, identify some potential amendments and possible changes to the bill uh, to address some of the concerns we're hearing. Um, and so, um, before I jump into the slideshow, just to give you a sort of a, an overview of what we're going to go through, um, we're going to talk a little bit about what, uh, transportation APF is. Um, then we will, uh, explain where we are right now, what our current traffic APF requires, um, talk about the work group process that resulted in this legislation, um, and then what the bill, uh, does coming out of the recommendations from that work group. So if you'll just bear with me one second.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we get into all that, I have a quick question. Because obviously, the, the thrust of this bill, as I see it, is you're expanding APF into a more multimodal view of transportation, right? You, you say expressly, last time this was done, it was focused solely on vehicles. Now you're looking at other modes of transit. Out of the gate, my curiosity is, what percentage of transit is occurring by these different modes? Do you all have that? Like, I want to understand how people are moving in the county. Because if we're saying we're going to move away from looking at cars, and we're going to say that's not a way that we just want to focus on solely, then in two thousand and five, was that ninety percent of the transit? Now car travel has moved down to sixty percent? So we've got a forty percent delta of transit that we're not addressing? Or are we at ninety today, and we were at ninety before, and we're doing this, but we don't actually see people traveling in this different mode? So who can answer that question? That, that's my, like, threshold, sort of out-of-the-gate question about all of this.
Uh, Brian Ulrich, Intermodal County Transit, Office of Transportation. Um, there is census data on journey to work and the modes. That doesn't encompass all mode, uh, travel, um, but there is that data that, you know, ACS data that gets published regularly, and those tables are available, we could provide them. I think we had some stuff in the transportation master plan about, um, I think it was Odenton, I don't know if it was Odenton, Glenburnie, and Pearl, but for the town centers, a mode share, because that was a target area for mode share. Um, so we, we, we had that, and then we just generally, I mean, there's not a percentage, but, you know, we do get a lot of requests for sidewalks and, and improvements as, as a mode. So just from, you know, anecdotal, personal requests, there are a lot of people asking for those improvements as well.
Yeah, I understood, and we get those requests, right, through capital. We hear from people, oh, we need a sidewalk here or there, and so, but I want to see their data on that. And so if that exists and we can get that, I think that'd be extremely helpful for us to understand. Because to me, I'm always like, what are we solving for, right? And so if the problem is, we used to be at ninety percent with cars, and now we're at forty percent, and there's a huge delta of people who are traveling in other modes, let's know exactly what that is. So if we can get that, I think that, to me, I'm certainly happy to hear the whole history of this. But that's where I'm coming at it, immediately out of the gate, just looking, what is that?
Uh, Brian Ulrich, okay, we'll, we'll provide that information.
I, I figured you were, I took your silence and you got it.
All right, that, I will go ahead and get started.
All right, good morning, everyone. Jansen Evelyn, how's everyone going or doing? I'm trying to stay awake. Um, the, the cold, um, I'm very fortunate that the temperature in here is, um, it's very, it's very helpful. Um, so, just very quickly, as we run through the slideshow, transportation APF for adequate public facility is the county's, um, quality control tool for growth. It ensures development doesn't outpace infrastructure. It also ensures that new developments have the road sidewalks and transit access needed to support them. Under current rules, we test only, only vehicular traffic. So a development could pass the road tests even if that development doesn't have safe, um, pedestrian or it's lacking transit connections. So the current road APF has not, as Ethan alluded to, it hasn't been updated since two thousand and five. And, um, and it no longer reflects our goals for multimodal access, for safety, and also for sustainable growth. Bill eighty-one twenty-five adds a separate adequacy test for each mode, vehicle, vehicles, um, pedestrians, cyclists, and transit. So our review process reflects how, um, people are moving around the county today, and, and Councilmember Volkey, of course, is going to provide the data. But it also positions us for how we want, um, people to move around the county as we continue to, um, grow and build. Next slide.
So currently, APF, as Jansen said, is vehicular only, um, and almost every development has to address APF. Um, there are some that have exemptions under seventeen-five-two-oh-one, but if you're adding more than fifty daily trips, uh, you do have to address your traffic. You have to demonstrate that everything within your study area is adequate, or you have to identify a mitigation to offset your impact to the system, the development impact to the system. Next. The traffic impact, uh, traffic impact study, there is specific study areas defined in the code from the site access to the first arterial road, and then along that arterial to the second. We look at existing traffic, background traffic, which is the traffic that's coming from already proposed development, and then the future traffic, which is all of that background traffic plus the development's impact. Um, we do occasionally require additional studies based on the individual development. We might have a different time of day or time of week that we need to study, or they might need to look at whether a signal will be required. And those are case by case, dependent on the development characteristics. One slide did get knocked out, unfortunately, so I'll just go over it very briefly. Uh, when a failure is identified, they do have to mitigate, which I said earlier. Um, and they have to do an improvement to address their failure or contribute to a capital project. Slide please, okay, nope, you got it. Uh, so we do have some challenges with APF as it is today. Uh, the methodology is using a very old outdated method. We brought, we, the industry has moved on to a more accurate method of determining adequacy. Um, all developments have the exact same study parameters. A very small development has to go to the second arterial. A very large development that may have regional impact will still have to go to that same exact spot. We do require it to be a capacity improvement, that's what the code requires. Not all improvements are capacity-related, but they might be good for safety or for other characteristics. And we don't have the ability to, uh, use those as mitigation. Proportionality goes back to the same as the development size. We have, uh, similar to development size, uh, some of our failures in the county are big failures. They need a big solution, and finding something that's within the scope, within proportionality to a smaller development is very difficult.
This is to ensure that smaller projects are not overpaying?
Capital project availability, we, we do allow projects to contribute to capital projects, but there isn't always a capital project to address that failure. And then for impact fee credits, uh, court decisions have altered how the credits are applied, and that's, that's a challenge we're facing right now.
And before we move on to the next slide, when you talked about, um, capital projects, what, what Sarah is saying is that there's difficulty tying the funds to real capital projects sometimes, which has an impact on the delivery, um, model. So it slows delivery, which has an impact on costs.
Mr. Volkey, hold on.
Thanks, I, I just think it's easier if we kind of, as we're going through, I'll just ask you a question. So when you talked about the methodology, and you're talking about how we're relying on outdated road capacity metrics. So walk me through that a little bit more, because that's one of the biggest gripes that we, I know all of us hear from people, is that no one believes that the traffic studies are appropriately assessing the impact of traffic. So where do you, it sounds like acknowledge that those shortcomings are, and how do you see this fixing that? I'm just curious about that.
So for intersections, we currently use a methodology called critical lane volume. And it's a planning level tool that is designed so that it can be done on pen and paper without using any additional computer modeling or anything else. It's, it's very easy, simple, but it's a planning level tool. Um, and when it was put into place, my understanding, I wasn't here, but my understanding is when it was put into place, the computer capacity to run the higher level things was very limited, so this was an appropriate tool at the time. Now, uh, the industry has something called highway capacity method, uh, which is software-based, and it's the, the equation's like a page long of every variable that can go into it. And we've got computers that can run it and run modeling now. And so they give a much more accurate, um, view of the traffic flow, of queuing issues, how many cars aren't making it through an intersection, et cetera, so that we can get a better picture of how things are actually flowing.
And, and do you see that, uh, is anybody submitting that to you now, like voluntarily? I know you don't probably require it, but do people ever give it to you?
We, we do require it for, um, if, if the CLB, so the existing methodology is over a certain number, they have to also submit that analysis with highway capacity methodology so that we can get a better idea of what mitigation will be required. So that they are familiar with that, that mode of, of doing things. It's just, that would be the requirement instead of being used to inform our solutions.
Okay, so if I'm understanding your solution to this, what you all see as a deficiency in the current way of handling it, you're going to get rid of this pen and paper metric, and you're going to say, we're going entirely to this computerized-based tool. We want to see that as the way we do things. We think that's more where we are today in twenty-twenty-five.
Yep.
Cool.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that question because that, we hear it all the time. Um, going back to the methodology, the pen and paper methodology that has been in use for umpteen, uh, years. in use for umpteen years, has there ever been an internal adjustment to try to modernize to the best of your ability? And if there has been, who in the department determines, okay, we're going to make adjustments with what we've been doing?
The existing methodology, now we have not changed because that's, that is not our methodology. That was a, I believe it came from the state originally, but I don't know the full history of it. We haven't tried to adjust the CLV. We've had discussions over the years about whether the design manual could be updated to require highway capacity methodology. And I don't know where that went, but it didn't go forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, continue, Mr. Evans.
So in addition to APF, adequate public facilities, we have the bicycle pedestrian transit assessment, BPTA. And that was passed several years ago. And I apologize, there's a typo on the screen, but basically, it's run through a cost cap, or it requires applicants to do bicycle pedestrian outdoor transit improvements. There's a cost cap. My typo, it should be 10 cents per square foot for warehouse, not 40 cents per square foot for warehouse, my apologies. For that, we require them to look about, within about a mile of the development, and see what they can do for bicycle pedestrian transit within that cost cap. We've had some, and if they can't find an improvement, they can contribute to just a generic CIP fund that the county has for multimodal improvements. The issues we've run into with that, the square footage doesn't correlate to the number of users, the number of trips we're getting. A very small fast food place will have a lot of trips, a lot of walking trips and things like that, but it's very small, so the cost cap is very low. Whereas an office building might have fewer trips, but have to have a higher cost cap. So that's, it doesn't quite match the impact. And then, again, finding developer improvements to, within that cost cap, to make the road network, the pedestrian network more efficient and better for users. It's a challenge to find the right improvement. And that is it for me.
Sure. Greg Swain, County Attorney. And I'll say the reason I'm sitting at this table now is because this work group started some time ago when I was still staff member of the Office of Law. But we began reviewing all this pre-pandemic, and had a large work group, had, I think, Councilman Volkey, there was a couple of those meetings, as well as some other members of the council, and really started very broadly with a kind of historic review of how all these, the systems that we have now, how they were developed back in 2005, and how that sort of progressed, and then what we thought the weak areas were. Had some interruption due to the pandemic, but still continued remotely. And then our work group sort of pared down as we got closer to identifying those big issues, and then pared down even further when we got to actually drafting the bill. But we did still include industry individuals, as well as, you know, county staff. The, our eventually, our work product was about a year ago, that we started sharing with various groups and sort of pared that down and fine tuned it. And I think probably by about spring of 2025, we had the basic version that we're looking at now, and have refined that a bit through the years, and have been discussing this with industry groups up until the introduction of the bill. And we've still, we've had, even after the introduction of the bill, we're continuing to meet with some of the industry groups to try to discuss and address the kind of concerns that they have expressed with regards to the bill. And these are some of the considerations that were taken into account. Really, overall, is something that you've already mentioned, is the general concern that traffic impact from new developments were not being adequately addressed, as far as their impact on the existing road network. And then also taking into account various county adopted plans, such as Plan, the General Development Plan, Plan 2040, and also the Move Anna Rundle Plan from the Office of Transportation. Both of those call for not only addressing issues with roads, but also, also, all different modes of transportation, such as pedestrian, bicycle, and transit. Taking into account not only the existing networks for those types of modes, but also other issues such as safety, particularly with pedestrians and bicycles. And so now what we're trying to do is just update the code to take those considerations in place. You know, one of the things that, just generally speaking about APF, is our APF law started really back in the late 70s. And at that time, of course, we already had an existing road network, right? So there were already deficiencies at that time that you couldn't push on to the developers to fix, right? Because they were preexisting. So really, you're not starting from zero. You're starting from like 75%. So a lot of the traffic issues that still exist kind of stem out of that, that we were, and I won't say the county was late to the game, because everybody was. These were issues that were just developing. So in a way, we've always been working a bit backwards. And as some of the further slides will show, there are some constitutional limits on what you can require developers to address when they're bringing in a new development.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So I notice transportation is missing from the table today. Oh, apologies. I guess I was just, I was looking for Sam. Sorry. Apologies. You'll be okay. When we talk about, in reaction to what you just said about starting with an already existing road network, do we consider ourselves to have an existing pedestrian, bike, ped, transit network in existence now? Or will every project that attempts to test is going to find a failing system?
There is existing network, and depending on, you know, the area in the county, how well it is connected. We did do the examples, and there are, you know, you can pass in multiple places in the county, depending on the mode. For both vehicular and audio modes.
But are we, is there a network that we're trying to get to that we can all see? Like, this is the goal, we're trying to get to this pedestrian network across zip codes and communities for all of us?
Yeah, sorry. So in Walk and Roll, for example, we have the bicycle network that we're trying to accomplish. And then there's also a clause in there talking about where sidewalks are appropriate in the county, you know, on roads of certain volume, certain density, and certain lot size, I think, is the three criteria for sidewalks. So there is a network that we're trying to get to, as well as a level of service for cars that we're trying to get to. It's also in the bill.
I ask because as we've built new schools in my community and the school, I've been very active in ensuring school to community and community to school connectivity. And we've done a pretty good job. We're, it's taken longer in some schools than we wanted. I won't name names. But there is still those older communities that do not have sidewalk. And so while, to get to that sidewalk that we built, when we built a school, there's still no sidewalk. So does this, how is this bill going to address that part of pedestrian connectivity? Unless something is built, I mean, are we going to be continuing our own pedestrian, our own capital projects in connectivity? Or I don't see the residential community outside of Severn Run High School and Archbishop Spalding, I don't see any development happening there. So when will those folks get their sidewalks? And does this bill get us there?
Well, this bill doesn't change what we're doing on the capital side. We're still building those networks, expanding those networks. All this would do is if a development comes in, that they would do a proportional share of that network based on the methodology we've established. So doesn't take away from the current activities that we're doing, just supplements it. You're talking about like inside existing neighborhoods? So it depends, it depends. You know, we are prioritizing the arterial roads and the collector roads, the bigger, more traveled roads. But there are, when, and I don't want to speak for DPW, I'll let you speak for DPW on your, on, well, one blanked out system.
So there are a number of capital projects that are trying to address, on a multi-year basis, the issues that you've raised. Most of those, the priorities for those are then developed with the, through the Office of Transportation, how they prioritize them, how they score the different projects. But again, you can only do so much with the funding we have. So, but they are multi-years. There's no plan on them ending. And as long as projects are identified, we're continuing to try to fill in those gaps wherever we can. There's one capital project that is the, that is the recommendations of what schools thinks they need, where they have gaps. There is a capital project for us just on the sidewalk bikeway fund, to work on improvements where we can with that. There is one to do work on state highway projects, or on state highway roads, to install pedestrian facilities on state roads. And then there are some of those that are focused, like the Old Mill Middle School area and the New High School along New Cut Road, where we had capital projects to help install both through the existing areas to get facilities and the students to those schools.
And if I, if I may add, Councilmember Pickard, I think, I think your question ultimately, because it's one thing to talk about what Public Works or what the county from a capital improvement perspective is doing, but I think your ultimate question is how will this bill, how will this bill help address some of these longstanding, longstanding network deficiencies? Something, and while we're going to get to that on the slide, I think I'll just go ahead and talk about how this bill will present mitigation, mitigation options. And so while some, while, and it will have a hierarchy that I think is relatively simple, but I think is very effective. Obviously, the first choice when new construction or development is occurring, is that onsite or adjacent physical improvements, like the turn lane sidewalks that are necessary. But if those aren't feasible, the second choice would be off-site improvements in the same corridor or community. And I, and I don't want to speak for Public Works, but I do believe that when we're looking at the possibilities with this, with this multimodal transportation APF in place, it provides us the opportunity as an option in places where there are those gaps, to utilize that, to utilize that as an option to address and fix some of those networks deficiencies.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
So when it comes to new developments, and I may have a couple of questions, just FYI. Madam Chair, are sidewalks required to be placed within new developments right now?
Within the developments.
Within the development.
Within the developments, yes.
Yes. On the outskirts or the exterior of the development, because I've seen some, maybe that's during the process, are sidewalks required to be, or widening of lane, is that, is that considered the exterior of the development?
Along an existing road, that would be a frontage improvement. Those are not required right now.
So frontage improvements are not required?
Correct.
What are impact fees used for?
I don't have any.
The impact fees that are then used in the capital program are, have a process for how it's, how a project is identified as to whether it's eligible to use impact fees. So that it's not...
No, no, I'm saying, if you go and try to get a development, the developer has to pay impact fees for that development, for roads, schools, public safety, I think, somewhere, maybe it's another one, but I think certainly those. The roads, I don't know if that equates internal sidewalk, or if the roads is the external roads adjacent to the community, and it's based off of, I guess, the size of the community or size of the houses, the units specifically, and how it's evaluated, and it's per unit. When we, the county, receive those funds, what do we do with those funds?
So when we, our county is divided, like for roads, for instance, our county is divided into, I think it's nine impact fee districts that are geographical. So impact fees that are paid within that district must be used within the district to improve capacity. So it's not necessarily limited to the development itself. It's limited to that impact fee area.
Correct. I'm glad you said that. So the nine districts, would that almost be considered a region for that development, where the adjacent projects that are in our CIP program that are in there and receiving impact fee funding, is that how you break down the regional, or I don't want to say regional, because regional is such a big word, but the neighborhood area that's impacted by that development for the enhancements of roads or sidewalks or bicycle trails, things like that? Are you using that region to define those cluster areas with this bill?
Yeah, there's a difference between impact fees and mitigation. So impact fees are paid, again, paid by every developer who's subject to impact fees, and are required to be spent within that impact fee district. So that you, where you're paying the fees, you're in that district, it's being used on that road network to increase capacity. Mitigation are exactions, basically, from a developer to say, if you are impacting the road network, and it doesn't pass, you've gone through the test, it doesn't pass, you need to do mitigation. That's typically going to be a developer funded improvement that's going to be, have a nexus to the impact that that development is making on the road network. So when you're doing mitigation, you're much closer to the development than you are when you're paying impact fees. Impact fees are still geographically related to the development, because they're in the district, but they're not right there. They're not like putting a new turn lane in, or putting a traffic signal in, or whatever it might be, that would, that would offset the impact of the increased traffic that the developer or the development is producing.
Now, you all use a term that the fees, or the, there's an option where if there are no improvements internal to the development, that they could do something that is adjacent in the area, or, I think, and this goes to my colleague from the Second District, which you referenced, what is that plan, what does that look like, that transportation system? How that transportation system is sectioned off per portion of the county, so that if you are a new development and you're going to be assessed these new fees to pay for something that isn't necessarily in your community, in your, in your, in your development? I'm trying to understand, to create a matrix where we could understand how they're going to be funding things that they may or may not have any ability to truly impact. And if we're just trying to get more revenue, I totally get that. That's what this is. You know, just call it what it is, and I'm fine with that. But I think I'm trying to, I'm struggling with adding this additional component to improve an area that, if they're adjacent to Brooklyn Park, there's not any large developments going in Brooklyn Park, for example.
I just want to be clear before we respond, when you say add an additional component, what specifically are you making reference to, so that we can respond?
Yeah, I'm saying, because you're creating this transportation element for, to be reviewed, and I think Option Two said that if, I'm trying to find it, any offsite improvements, if onsite mitigation is not feasible or sufficient, developers may contribute to nearby infrastructure improvements that address their project's impact, particularly in the same travel corridor or community area, or community impact area.
So you're talking about mitigation specifically?
So mitigation. My, so if they're going to be building a development and trying to mitigate an area that, that isn't producing any more additional revenue, like, I'm going to go back to Brooklyn Park, there aren't any new large developments that'll be in Brooklyn Park, for example, because it's already built up. It's already, so if they are impacted by a negative transportation corridor or whatever, they're going to be dependent on other future developments within that northern, is the assumption, northern part of the county that's going to create more additional resources to improve those areas. How are we, when it comes to our fairness doctrines, is that, does that, does that make sense? And/or, why not just raise the impact fees and use the impact fees to pay for those things that you're trying to, to address?
So I think the difference, when the bill has this hierarchy of mitigation options, and the first choice is always going to be, do what you can to offset the actual impact that you're making on the transportation network, and by that I mean all modes of transportation, road, bike, pedestrian transit. Sometimes that's not possible, just because of physical limitations.
Correct.
You can't expand a road, because there's something there, so then you look a little broader, and you're still offsetting the impact to some degree, but it's going to be further out in the network. So, and as I said earlier, all of this is checked by constitutional limits, because whatever you're requiring a developer to do, you still have to show that that improvement, or that donation of money, whatever it may be, is roughly proportional to the impact that the developer development is having on the transportation network, and also that there's some nexus between that work and the impact of the development. So those, all those things come into play. You don't necessarily have that concern with impact fees. Impact fees can be applied in a much broader sense. But mitigation, you have to kind of connect those links of that chain, so you know that whatever you're requiring the developer to do, is going to some degree, reduce the impact of the additional roads, or additional trips, whether it's bike, pedestrian, whatever, that that development is creating.
All right. Brian, because I know the other questions.
Just real quick, Brian, Officer Transportation, I just want to be clear that, that APF is a specific test of, in, in the case of vehicles, it's two intersections from your development. And then the impact fees are kind of a generic, you're also contributing to other intersections. So we're limiting the test to a certain geographic area, but then also, all those people in Brooklyn Park, they're going to travel down Route 2 to go to Glenbernie. We don't test that far, but we know that they'll be adding traffic to that system. So it's, it's two tiers, it's all about off-site. They have to build their development onsite to the current standards, and then these are tests for off-site improvements. You're adding to the network, just like you're adding sewer, sewer flow to a system. This is, you're adding traffic flow to a system, and it's downstream. The APF test, tests two arterial intersections away, but then those impact fees are, we know you're going to have other impacts, these are broader impacts through a broader region. We're not going to test every intersection, that would be too, kind of too intense for the, the benefit you would get. So those impact fees are kind of a broad, your other impacts, and then the APF is testing the existing network right in your adjacent area. What are, what are, are there existing failures? And then if there are existing failures, you just can't make them worse. You're not fixing existing failures, you're just, the traffic you add can't make it worse. So it's two different tests, if that makes sense.
No, it, it makes sense, I just, I'm just, I am not clear on how, if, if a sidewalk mitigation is needed, because an area is deemed as insufficiently capable of handling all of those, the foot traffic, for example, if the development has built all sidewalks within their development, why are they being tasked to improve sidewalks in an adjacent community or neighborhood, when they didn't, when that, you know what I'm saying?
No, I get, I get what you're saying. So, so the test, in, in the case of the pedestrians, is, in, within your development, you're building everything to standard.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have to connect, so your development, if you're building residential, say, they're going to walk to the McDonald's down the street, or whatever. So the idea behind the, the geographic test is that your impact would be then on, hey, how do you get that development to the adjacent uses? So within that 500,000 feet, you have to look, are there sidewalks? If there are sidewalks there, then they don't have to do anything, they're not asked, being asked to pay for other improvements, they're only being passed to pay for the improvements to connect their, their development into the system. The impact fees can be used anywhere in that region, so that's a, that's a broader.
But they can be used to do those same things, though.
Right, that, yeah, they can be, right, right. Well, we've, we've kind of expanded the language to make them be able to use that for sidewalk capacity, but yes.
Right.
So that's a broader, so that could also be, right, correct. But the, the APF test is more, a more targeted, within their, connecting their development to the network, and that improvement would only have to happen if their, say, development doesn't really well connect to the others.
Got it. And last thing I'll say before I pass on, because I, you know, as we're looking to find ways to streamline housing, for example, creating more barriers for that, in my mind, no, it just, it's, it just, you know, we either, in the military, they give us commander's intent. Commander's intent is to take the hill, we're going to take the hill. And so confusing that message with, take the hill and take the valley, kind of sends mixed signals. And so this may be adding to that effort. I get what you're trying to do, and I understand why it's needed to have this conversation, but we're trying to create avenues where affordable housing, and so this may be one of those things that adds extra things on top of that process.
Actually, before we transition back to the slideshow, I want to, I want to make sure I just kind of react to that. That, yeah, obviously, from the administration's perspective, we push, we push back on that, that analogy. This administration and this county council has done some leading things with respects to land use, with respects to housing and addressing, and looking forward. If we are going to continue to look forward, we have to make sure that this, that, and as this community and this county continues to grow, we need to ensure that the infrastructure is there to support it. We want to continue to, to build in alignment with Plan 2040, and Plan 2040, which, as you guys are probably tired of me, every time I come up here, I talk about how I always connect everything black, back to that general development plan. And the reality is, when you look at Plan 2040, when you look at all these other policy manuals, that, that, that talk about how growth is going to look in this county, how growth will be moving forward, we want to also address the, the impact that this new growth will have on our transportation infrastructure, as well as to mitigate some of those vehicular impacts by, by, by encouraging alternative methods of travel. So, so I actually don't view this as a, as a logjam. If anything, this is a, this is a way to, as we continue to improve this county, this is a way to do it in a holistic manner, in align, again, in alignment with Plan 2040. So I have to push back against the narrative that somehow, that somehow this is, this is some additional cog in the wheel, just like we addressed school adequate public facilities, to ensure that this county can continue to meet the educational needs, but yet not prohibit growth. We want to do the same thing with regards, with regards to addressing an outdated traffic APF, as well as looking forward to the future. So I know that other council members have their mics on, so I'll stop talking.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is more of a general line of question. When, when was the first work group for the APF? This APF roadway?
February of 2020.
February 2020. Was there an APF work group report that was put out, like the school APF?
That's what this is.
Is it the one that's online, I'm looking at, but right now I'm looking online, school adequate public facilities work group, and there's something that I can click on from the final report 2023. I don't see one.
I think there were two separate work groups, just, I, I think that's what your question, there were two, and I, and of course, this preexists, preexists my tenure in the county, but I know there were two separate work groups.
Right, but I'm looking at the school adequate public facilities work group final report. Do we have that same exact report for this APF group?
No.
Not at all? Okay.
The effort of the work group was into developing the bill that you have in front of you.
Okay, that's good, because I'm going down this line of questioning. Mr. Swain, is there anything in the charter or the code that prohibits the administration or the council from discussing the topic of a work group before a bill is introduced?
Discussing the topic of a work group?
Discussing a topic.
A topic that a work.
Prior to introduction of the bill.
I don't believe so.
Okay, the reason I'm asking this question is, I, I'm going to ask more questions as we discuss this bill, because I want to understand the complete process, how we do things now, how we are proposing to change things. And in order to do that, I don't know that there's enough time in this work session or future work sessions, so be prepared for more questions. I will just share just a little bit of frustration that we're basically going to be playing catch-up on a very short timeframe, because the bill has been introduced to something that is intended to be incredibly impactful to our county, rightfully so, we do need to update the APF. But I'm feeling like we're a little, you know, our hands are tied a little bit in trying to understand all of this information that has been discussed since February of 2020, we're now having to digest it and make decisions in three months. So, yes, Mr. Swain?
Let me say this. So my involvement, we began discussions about transportation APF as far back as 2017, in various formats. So the work group was formed, this, the actual work group that led to this wasn't formed a few years later, but prior to that, we were doing a deep dive into transportation APF. And at, at that time, when we started, it wasn't necessarily to say, we're coming up with a new bill. It was to say, we're looking at all the components of this, to see if a new bill is needed, see if changes to the design manual may be needed. Now eventually, that morphed into a group saying, well, we're going to form these two groups, one for school APF, and one for transportation APF, which came a little bit later. So, and I'd also say, you know, some of this came out of the court case that involved impact fees back in 2016. So this, it wasn't that we started a work group to say, in, right away, we're going to rewrite the APF. We, we formed various groups, well, at least two groups, probably three, to look at components of transportation APF, and eventually, we formed into a larger group to say, what can we do about it, now that we've seen some of these issues? So it was evolving in that sense.
Completely understand, and, and I, I think that, at least I've been aware that a bill is going to be coming in some form or fashion for months. My only comment on this is that I, this is not the first time a big impactful, multi-page bill has been introduced to this council, and we are on rapid fire to try to catch up and learn all the nuances of the process. I wish we would approach, I wish this administration would approach it differently, and bring us the work group findings, let us discuss, discuss it, share points on the bill that's coming, so it can be massaged in advance, and we're not on the fly, under the gun, under a timeline, to get something right, because this is important. It's going to, it's going to impact existing communities, future communities, businesses, develop, I mean, you name it, it's a huge impact. So I will go to my first question. How, at what point do we share with a proposed development, what they are going to have to do to pass the APF, and what is changing in this bill? Like, what's the timeline in a development proposal that this is initiated?
I'm sorry, there were two questions, and I, I think Mr. Hunt was going to respond to your first one.
Oh, certainly.
Before we went to the second one.
Certainly, so I will, I will say this, I understand this is a large bill, it is a complex bill, and it is, there's a lot of technical information in here. And unfortunately, we have 95 days from the time of introduction until a bill expires, that's just, that's just what it is. So we are always happy to sit down with any council members, and we can go through in more detail and talk through some of these points, and again, that's part of the reason why we are going to be asking for this bill to be held at at least the first hearing, if not subsequent hearings, so that we can have those conversations.
And I do appreciate that, so, thank you.
Do you mind repeating your second question?
Yeah, I'm just, so, going back to, I want to understand how we're doing it now versus what the bill is proposing to change. When in the development process, does this kick in, and the developer knows, okay, this is what I'm going to have to do, and how much it's going to cost, versus, is there a change in the proposed bill?
So currently, the developers can opt to address adequate public facilities at either the first, first stage, which is sketch or preliminary, or the second stage, which is final or site development plan. It's their choice when they want to address it. They will do a traffic impact study that looks at all of those parameters that I, I talked about before, the second arterial, the road rating, road condition, all of that. If there's a failure, that's identified in their study, and they propose a mitigation that is within, that they feel is within, proportional to their development, and will address the issue. We review it at that point to determine whether that is acceptable to whatever entity may end up taking control, whether it's a state highway administration, or DPW, to determine if it's going to be adequate to fix whatever the, whatever the failure is, or whether their contribution to the failure. And it's established at that point.
Madam Chair, may I ask a thought?
Yes.
In the circumstance of a state roadway, the state, does the state review and give feedback to the county?
Yes, so it's, it's based on the county APF rules, but they're the ones who are going to have to maintain a facility at the end, so we get their concurrence before we approve the APF.
And is that timing and flexibility for the developer to come up with their own mitigation staying the same in the proposed bill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you. I, I, we, we do have a, a lot of legislation to get to today, but currently, the BPTA look that new, new construction needs to take, how, how, how far out of the off-site do they have to go currently?
It's about a mile.
Currently?
Currently, about a mile. They don't have to fix everything they find, they, they are subject to the cost cap. So whereas this, the new bill would have very specific things they are looking for, right now, the developer goes out, or their consultant goes out, looks at the road network and suggests some improvements within their cost cap, that could be beneficial to the area.
Okay. And then, following up on my colleague, Ms. Fiedler's commentary and questions, you've already, well, this is the first time we're getting to really have a look at this bill, and have a public conversation about this bill, but y'all are coming to the table saying you're already promote, going to propose a hold, if not two. So what, what concerns are y'all looking to address during that time, since you already seem to think that this bill is not in the shape it's going to be in at final passage? What are, what's already, we haven't talked to you, we haven't talked about the bill yet, so what do y'all see as issues currently that exist in the bill?
So very quickly, we've, during the course of this, following the conclusion of the work group and prior to introduction of the bill, we had the opportunity to engage with various stakeholders and various advocacy groups to, to, one, inform them of the work group's recommendations and whatnot. And that, those conversations continue to, we, those are ongoing conversations. We, one, one of the, I know we could have just done an amendment to fix the grandfather, and that's a relatively quick fix, but what we wanted to do was address some of the concerns we heard on a larger scale, in terms of, will, as we transition towards multimodal, will that have any sort of undue impact on, on the time? But more importantly, will it have an undue impact in terms of cost? And so those are the two things where we're looking at to ensure that, because the two north stars for this administration when it comes to this bill is updating and fixing a two-decade-old traffic APF policy, and the second one is to ensure that, that our goals towards having a more connected transportation infrastructure align with all of our policy recommendations, which encourages multimodal as a way to relieve some of the vehicular traffic. So with those two north stars, or those two end goals in mind, I think we're going to continue to engage with some of the partners in the community that will, one, be utilizing those roads, but also will be building to ensure that this bill is, is one that is, that is, that is really collaborative. I mean, and again, the work group went on for several years, and it had members from all different, all sorts of different stakeholder groups. We want to continue to have that conversation, we have several meetings scheduled later this week, and we're going to continue to do that. And that's why we have floated the hold, that's why we're going to have the hold, to ensure that we, we don't feel rushed as we have those conversations.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So it seems to me, the question in where we are as a suburban county, with some urban nodes and some, a lot of rural area, seems to me, the issue in front of us, in front of the administration and this council, is we want to increase multimodal, how do we get it, and who pays for it? I mean, is that, that's what we're talking about here. And where should it be, where should we be emphasizing it? I mean, are we, are we going to treat roads in South County the same as we are in the Glenbernie Town Center? That's the, those are the questions on my mind. And then, when we talk about redevelopment, or some of our older commercial corridors that were formed decades ago, and we're looking to modernize those. that were formed decades ago, and we're looking to modernize those, I know my vacant gas stations, and one of them was pointed out in this, in the DPW report, it's been vacant for a decade. So if we're going to ask that, the next person, whoever it might be, investor, to come in and turn that into a cool, lovable space, are they also going to have to look a mile in every direction? Because I don't see, if we don't take into consideration what it already costs to redevelop blighted properties, and we're just going to keep increasing, I don't think my corner is going to turn into anything cool anytime soon. We know inflation is high, we know construction inflation is higher than regular inflation. And I, I just want to make sure that when, while we all want to future-proof our roadways for multimodal, how do we do it and who pays for it is really important. As it, as it bumps up against our other goals of redevelopment and affordability in our housing market, so, we have, there's a lot of work to do here. It seems to me, I'm having flashbacks, Ms. Fiedler, of a certain bill that should not be named. And I feel like, if this had, if we'd had a report that was presented of the findings of Transportation APF a couple months ago, and then we were dealing with legislation now, we wouldn't be on a 95-day shot clock and dealing with amending this bill in a public forum to get to what we all want to get to. This is extremely frustrating for council members. I just, I, I think it's important to emphasize that. It's just extreme, this is an extremely frustrating situation to find ourselves in again.
Was there a question?
I guess it is.
You don't have to, they don't get to respond if there's no question. That's why I'm asking.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Mr. Volkey.
Appreciate that. All right. I'm going to try to do a little bit of a lightning round, maybe some yes and no questions, to try to be respectful to the other people who are all here from different departments. Okay. Currently, we have the ability to ask developers to do off-site improvements, correct?
To mitigate their impact, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. So this bill with respect to allowing off-site improvements, that's something we already can do, correct?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Mr. Swain gave the overview of how we got to the group and how it whittled down. When you got to the final iteration of the group, were there any outside traffic planners involved in that?
Yes.
Who were they?
Jackie Plot from Traffic Concepts.
Okay. She was involved in the final group that put together this bill?
She was in, yes.
Okay, because I've heard that she wasn't, that's why I'm asking. It's really just a yes or no, was she there?
She, she has been in all of the work group meetings.
Okay, fair enough. With respect to the matrix that you talked about, if I'm looking at the right place in the bill, yes or no, on my own page 21, is that where it starts with the mitigation improvement shall be evaluated in the following order? Is that the spot? Okay. And with that spot, the first sort of category is BPT improvements, right? And after that, then it goes to road improvements. You're not starting with road improvements, is what I'm asking. You're starting with bicycle, pedestrian, transit infrastructure?
I think that's allowing credit for other mode trips.
Okay. Which gets back to my very first question that we started all this with, which is understanding where you all want to sort of drive people. People aren't there yet, right? If you put in all these improvements, but people don't use them, and they're still driving in their cars, we're improving something that people aren't using. So that's why that data is important for us to understand, to know whether this is actually going to work.
Well, just on that point, the very first section of 175902 on page 21 addresses traffic mitigation, and that's kind of the basic way that we've always done traffic mitigation. There's, there's two paragraphs, one and two.
I see where it says that, but then if I go to the next page on 21, subsection four, it says mitigation improvement shall be evaluated in the following order. So the first option under that, you all said there's a framework, the first option looks to be, you go to bicycle, pedestrian, and transit infrastructure. Am I understanding that role?
Well, I believe that for, for road mitigation, it's going to be governed by A1 and 2.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. With respect to the other counties that you showed us where we are standing in relation, there was a slide that you had, the only county that has what we're looking at doing is Montgomery County, right?
Yes.
Okay. And in fact, Montgomery County doesn't even have what we're proposing, do they?
I believe they do, unless you have a specific detail you're talking about.
Sure, I will, yeah. There's a proportionality calculator, Montgomery County has that, we don't have it, right?
Correct.
Okay. And there is no cost cap in here, which Montgomery County has, correct?
They do now, they didn't when they started.
I understand, but they have it now, because there were some challenges, and they had to go back and amend that to add that to their bill, didn't they?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So you know that another jurisdiction has tried to do something similar, you know that jurisdiction has had to make amendments to it, and yet the bill you brought forward doesn't even go with what they have, you're doing what they did before that they found didn't work. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, let me, let me say this, as far as proportionality, we do address proportionality in the very first mitigation section.
But it's subjective, right? The proportionality is subject to what you all determine.
No, well, it is, to some degree, it's subjective, but it also is based on those, those two critical constitutional factors of proportionality and nexus.
Okay.
So it's not a calculator, per se, but it is a check.
Okay. When you drafted this bill, I just want to make sure I understand this, the work group had been disbanded prior to the drafting of the bill, correct?
No.
So you're saying that the, the final iteration of the work group is what actually drafted the bill, looked at the bill, saw the whole thing, saw the product that now is in front of us?
The final, the final meeting of the work group included review and consensus on the bill.
Of this legislation?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm just getting differing information, which is why I'm trying to be very specific about the words.
There, that's not to say there might not have been some language changes since that point.
Okay.
But those have been shared with the work group as we've gone on without a meeting.
Got it. Okay. So there has not been a meeting of the work group since the final version of this bill was drafted?
I'm sorry.
There has not been a meeting of the work group since the final version of this bill was drafted?
Since this current version of the bill was drafted, no, because the final version of the, the final work group meeting occurred with the prior iteration of this bill that Mr. Braun is saying, which was shared with the group in terms of consensus.
You said that was a prior iteration, there's been a subsequent iteration, which is what we're looking at.
That's what we're looking at.
This was never discussed in the work group.
Because the work group, because the work group has concluded.
I understand.
However, we have continued to engage with many of the individuals that have been on that work group, whether it's individuals from the, from the bicycle advocacy space or, or, or individuals from, from the building industry.
But yes or no, you didn't think it was important to have a meeting of the work group to look at the final iteration of the bill?
Because the work group was concluded, Mr. The work group was concluded.
But that's a no. Work group that's worked for years on this and have the final meeting where you all talk about the final version of the bill?
Councilmember Volkey, I know you're trying to hammer in a point, but as I've stated multiple times, and I'll continue to state, as long as you answer the same redundant question, the work group concluded several months ago, and, and so, no, we have not had an additional meeting with a work group that has been since disbanded.
Okay. And then this is just a comment to my colleagues, to be clear, we are not in a box where we have to do anything. In fact, we can just allow the shot clock to expire, and this bill will die, and then the administration will have to bring something else back. So lest we ever feel like we're in a position of, oh, gosh, we have to do it, no, we don't.
Mr. Smith.
Just, just from an information standpoint, for anyone at the table, when a road test, and thank you, Madam Chair, when a road test is, is initiated, I know how they do that. I've seen the little sort of cords on the middle of the roadway, and they count trips as the vehicles drive over it, there's some machine that actually calibrates and can tell when a vehicle has driven over that. And so, and then, over a period of time, whether it's a week or two weeks, it reports that data back via the sensors that are out there on the roadways. How, and you don't have to explain it now, how would someone calculate bicycle trips? That's one. Like, what, because bicycles, they could be on the roadways, they could be on the sidewalk, I've seen them all over the place, so how will you accurately reflect bicycle calculation? And then, how do you, when it comes to the roadways as well as the, the transit improvements, how do you, what's the measure of success when it comes to connecting two communities together? Because I'm assuming if a developer builds sidewalks within their community, and you're looking at the periphery on the outside and, and sort of making sure we have this cohesive, you know, walking path network throughout the county, what defines success when it comes to having those two integrated? Is it one sidewalk where, you know, that could only have 100 pedestrians walk per day through it? Or is, like, what does that measure of success look like when it comes to that pedestrian traffic from one community to the next that defines success? And then, how do you, how do you measure bicycle calculation? How do you measure that? So we know that, is it a 10-foot sidewalk? Do we have to have our own pathway, so on and so forth? Because, because alluding to what Mr. Volkey mentioned, you know, is this a, if we build it, they will come? Because we could build a bike path, for example, and then, all the, all the development that's being built is a 55 and older, and maybe they don't use bicycles. And so they're going to be, they're going to be funding bicycle paths for something they're never going to use. And so I'm just trying to figure out how we, how do you interpret that as an administration? And to help me understand what that looks like. That's all.
There's a couple of questions there, Brian, Office of Transportation, I can answer like transit, Transit APF test. So we have a tiered system as far as, is there an existing transit network in the development area? So in South County, there's, and there's tiers, if it's in the town center, you're looking for more frequent 15-minute interval transit trips. In South County, or in more rural areas, it's a zonal, it's like the call-and-ride. So everywhere in South County that has the existing call-and-ride, they will pass the test for transit because there's an existing zonal system. So that, that's the tiered approach of, you know, in parole or Odenton, we want more fixed route transit at a certain percentage or frequency. And in South County, it would be a zonal service. So that's the test for transit. And if you fail, if, if the system doesn't exist, you pay for the seats on, on the bus based on the percentage of trips that currently are used. Speaking of that ACS survey, if, if your development uses, you know, if the county people use, 5% of the people use transit, then 5% of your trips would be using transit, and you would pay for, you know, that seat on a bus. So from the transit perspective. And then bicycle?
So for, for the bicycle counts, there are two different ways, there's a lot of different ways, two major ways of doing traffic counts. One, the tube counts, where they're called what you're talking about, where the tubes across the, the road counts the vehicles going over it. That is just a general hour-by-hour over a 24-hour to two-week period where that's out there to give you a total count. The actual count for bicycles would be done when you do a specific count at an intersection, either by people going out and sitting and counting during peak hours, or by cameras, mostly do it now. On, on those counts, those are typically for only in the peak period, and you would then be getting counts of vehicles, bikes, pedestrians, on, on all the modes, on the roads approaching that intersection. So that's where the bike count would come in.
That's good. Thank you.
Any other, I'm stepping in for Chair Hummer while she steps out for a minute. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? I'm sorry, I had to miss a pretty significant part of the discussion because I had a meeting scheduled at noon, and I'm obviously back, but. Then great. I guess we should proceed to the next slide.
I think we've covered a lot of what was in the slides through our dialogue here. I'm just going through, checking. So these are the key provisions of the bill, which we've already discussed regarding the mitigation, extending APF beyond roads. So Jan, I don't know if you wanted to offer any closing comments?
No, this, again, we've done the, I think we've answered and had pretty vigorous Q&amp;A and dialogue over the details of the bill, as we stated from the beginning and the offset. From the outset of this conversation, we're going to hold the bill next week, and we're going to continue to engage to amend the bill as appropriate. But again, our north stars are that we need to modernize our transportation infrastructure as well as update our traffic APF. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
So this bill will come back for a public hearing on Monday, right?
Correct.
So we'll be back at the table, it'll have to go through a public hearing before the council can decide if we're going to hold the bill. I would, I would, if, well, that's a whole nother conversation. But I know I still have a lot of questions that aren't really answered in the presentation, so maybe we can ask some questions in the meantime, and y'all can be prepared at the public hearing to answer those questions. I know there's a lot of information that will, you know, there's, will the new methodology be in the code, or is it in the design manual? Like, there's a lot of things that aren't, we don't, we don't have, we don't have regulations in design for this bill, we only have what you're wanting to codify. So I would just maybe think about some of those things that are missing, but we do have a lot of bills to get to, so, and I have places to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robyn, for filling in for me for a minute. I thank the administration for coming on, I think there's still a lot of questions for this, we have a lot of other bills, we're going to move on now. Yeah, I think that was said before, and I am sure council members will be reaching out to you moving forward. Thank you very much, everyone. Next up is Bill number 8225. 911 specialist property tax credit. Mr. Hunt?
It's mine, it was Ms. Picker. Sorry. This is very straightforward and very quick. Our code currently provides a property tax credit for 911 specialists. The existing duration of this credit is for a maximum of five taxable years. One taxable year may be renewed upon application for four additional taxable years. This legislation proposes to increase the duration of the credit to a maximum of 10 taxable years to bring it in line with the current program for public safety officer property tax credit found in section 4-2-313 of the code.
Does the administration, how many things they want to add?
We're comfortable with this bill, happy to answer any questions. I do have Brian Schenk from the Office of Finance in Kelly County from the Office of Law here.
Mr. Volkey.
I don't want to crash the Democratic candidates for county executive sponsorship, but, but I would love to be a co-sponsor on this bill, so if you can add me.
Noted. Thank you, Mr. Volkey.
That's right. So, well, I'll join the party, please add me as well.
Will do. Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
I think that's one, I think that's one where we're all, that everybody should be treated the same in public safety. So, there you go. So, that's right. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much for sitting through all this. Bill number 8425, master plan for water and sewer.
Okay. Ethan Hunt, again, for the administration of Kelly County, our supervising county attorney. Cindy Carrier, our planning administrator from the Office of Planning and Zoning coming up, as well as Chris Murphy, our utility engineer, and Chris Biggerstaff, our senior engineer from the Department of Public Works. So this bill is to propose text and map amendments to the 2022 master plan for water and sewage supplies in order to, systems in order to provide public water and sewer to the county-owned Joint 911 Public Safety Center, public water for the county-owned Police Special Operations Building, and acknowledge the transfer of existing service from the state to the county for the Crownsville Hospital Memorial Park area. Evaluation was conducted for sewer management for Crownsville Hospital Memorial Park, and so I just want to take a step back a sec and emphasize that Crownsville Hospital site had its own utility system. They had their own water and own sewer system. It's old, it's outdated, so an evaluation was done on the management options for that system, several alternatives were reviewed, and the recommendation was to transfer, to transition to a sewage pumping station and associated forest main. As the existing plant on site required extensive upgrades and extensive costs, the sewage pumping station and forest main are a better environmental solution for the area when crosstalk. station and force main are a better environmental solution for the area when compared to the current spray irrigation plant that essentially sprays treated wastewater onto large open fields. This new pump station and force main will send flow to the normal county systems, which means it will be treated more effectively at one of the county's wastewater plants. The areas surrounding the park are in the Rural Sewer Service Area and Rural and Agricultural Development Policy Areas. The intent is to serve only the Crownsville Memorial Park area, which is identified in one of the exhibits and the Joint 911 Center. To achieve this, they'll be served by a restricted access eight-inch force main, and the Joint 911 Center will be served by a restricted access eight-inch water main. I do have the experts here who can answer any questions.
Mr. Volkey?
Thanks, Madam Chair. This is somewhat of a question, but more of a comment. So the state gave us $30 million for taking Crownsville off their hands, right?
Correct.
We're going to spend 15.2 million of that just to update the water and sewer. We're not even into the asbestos yet. So.
Correct.
That's more of a, it's more of a comment than, than a question, but.
I know it's not a question. May I still respond though?
Please.
Okay. So I would say Crownsville is a multi-year legacy project that will take years, if not decades, to fully achieve and realize. And you're correct, that, and that, that $30.5 million was well spent on the studies that were done to determine that this is the best and most environmentally friendly option, as well as other associated studies with the overall layout of the park and the plan for the park.
I know these cost concerns troubled previous administrations when previous discussions about the county taking over Crownsville were had. So I'm just making that point, you know, just to say, I don't know whether this is the right answer, the wrong answer. See, you guys are all the smart water and sewer people. You know all of this. But it's expensive. That's all I'm going to say. It's expensive, and we didn't get a lot of money from the state to do much on this property, so now it all falls to us. So we, it's our, it's our problem to deal with. I am curious, though, about the water and sewer improvements. I know that they're in the capital improvement program. I know you noted that. With that, is this, is there any way to like, keep sort of hobbling along, if you will, with the current situation? Or is this something that has to be done? I'm not even sure what we're doing at Crownsville that would require this be done right now. Like, what's the corresponding development over there? Right?
They needed extensive upgrade on the water side. The water, the water plant is working.
It is working?
It is working. We're planning on using the water plant. The master plan amendment is really just to set the boundary for the, for the pressure zone for the water side.
Right.
For Crownsville.
Right.
There's an extension for the Joint 911 Center to bring water up to there because there's no water there currently. The wastewater system is, it's not, it's not worth fixing.
Okay.
It's a spray irrigation system. It uses, if you look at the, at the aerial of Crownsville, it uses the vast majority of all that cleared land is for spray irrigation. There's also giant lagoons. We're going to basically make the Crowns Memorial Park something usable because we're going to reduce the footprint so much.
Yeah, it sounds gross. It sounds really nasty.
We're currently pumping and hauling all the wastewater out of that thing because it's, it's a bear to operate and stuff like that. All the equipment we took over is antiquated and unusable, basically.
And again, I'm assuming you already did this, but I'm going to ask the question. You did some sort of cost benefit analysis of we keep pumping versus we dump the money in to do this infrastructure improvement, and by doing that, we think we're going to break even when?
We did an O and M analysis over 20 years and stuff like that to either renovate the plant as is, which wasn't ideal because of the irrigation fields, or go to a newer style plant and all that, which wasn't ideal because of MBE regulations of where we'd have to discharge.
Okay.
And stuff.
Did you look at just like pumping and hauling? Like, we do.
Pumping and hauling is just a temporary right now because there were concerns with the existing system and all that. So we brought down the levels using the pump and haul option until we can get to the pump station of force main.
Yeah, so we're, we're spending about three quarters of a million dollars a year right now for the pump and haul.
That's, that's the question I'm asking.
So you can kind of figure out, just straight out cost, you would get there in roughly 20 years, right? $15 million.
Sure, I got you.
The other thing is that, you know, if you keep doing the pump and haul, we still have these lagoons of wastewater.
Yeah.
Sitting around the park.
So you're saying that that's where it sits? You don't have like a storage container? It's going into a lagoon directly?
If you look, if you look at the aerials.
It goes into a small pump station, and then the only option we had was to use one of the lagoons right now to pump and haul out of. That's how it was treated before is it would go into the lagoons, it gets treated quickly with some chlorine and goes over to the ponds. The ponds would then spray onto these irrigation fields.
So there's no, there's no.
If you want to come out.
I mean, maybe, I'm kind of curious. This sounds so bad, I almost have to see it in person, but. So there's no like holding tank? It's not like a septic where you've got something that you're just pumping out the septic?
Lagoons are, again, the septic material as it comes in, they get aerated and then go into a chlorine contact chamber that treats those.
It's unbelievable.
And they get held in ponds until they can spray on the field. So there's certain times of the year they can only spray.
Wow. All right. Well, I may be rethinking my thoughts on this project.
I've been out there and seen them, and I was like, ew, yeah, let's, let's change this. It's. Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. I will just comment that it is a very, very old, archaic type of sewage management is probably the nicest way to put it. And if we wanted to do anything environmentally responsible and, you know, really go forward with any of the plans at Crownsville, I mean, right now, a good part, I mean, there are, you know, different organizations inhabiting parts of Crownsville, as I know you know. But the plans going forward involve many more organizations, many more individuals using the space, some of which will likely be revenue generating to, you know, to address your cost concern. But I think to continue to use this, what, how old exactly is this system? Do you know?
I think from the 50s.
So we're talking not quite a century, but getting there in terms of age. And so, and also the added benefit that it will be able to connect to the new Joint 911 Center, which is down. And I don't want to open a can of worms because I realize this is a can of worms. I know that there is, there are lots of thoughts and feelings about having public sewer in the neighborhoods along General's Highway, and I'm almost scared I even said that out loud. But is that something, the way you've described it, it sounds like that is not a possibility on the system that would be.
So it'll, it'll be a force main, so it's not like a gravity system that anybody could tie into. And then we're also labeling it as a restricted access sewer. So our thoughts are that nobody else is going to connect it.
Okay, so if, if that became a conversation among the communities along General's Highway about wanting to, you know, somehow create a public sewer, this will not be available?
Yeah, as currently as the water sewer master plan, it would not be available.
Okay. All right. So that was, I sort of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Took a little liberty to ask my own question there, but it, I think for, for the whole plans, it really, the short answer is for the, the plans of Crownsville to go forward, it has to be done. Is that fair to say? Mr. Vol.
So a huge chunk of it because it's force main, some sort of pumping station? Is that like a huge cost? Okay, all right.
Yeah.
The pumping station alone is about three to $4 million and all that, and that's kind of typical size and stuff like that. We're not doing anything outrageous just for this site.
No, I mean, I've heard from developers who, they've been, if there's a requirement for that, it's a million bucks easily right off the bat.
Yeah, I mean, the pumps, generators, just excavation itself is, it's all costly, construction.
I guess the only thing that I'm like thinking about, and these are the two sides of this, and you may not have an answer to this, I acknowledge that, but my understanding of the plans for Crownsville are it's going to be a park, it's going to be sort of an incubator, it's going to be a hub of certain things, but I don't know how much actual development's going to go there, right? So does the cost of putting in a force main with a pumping station and all that, is that ultimately the same cost, less expensive than just bringing up to some kind of septic system with a holding tank that you're going to keep pumping and you're going to keep taking out? And how does that compare? That's, that's the way I'm thinking about it, because I mean, I have that at Chesapeake, right? You guys, you're pumping that every day? Like, there's always trucks up and down because the exact same issue. There's no force main, it's down, you can't do a gravity system, whatever, so. I don't, I'm just curious about those costs. That's what I'm thinking about.
That wasn't one of the options we had looked at, just because it's not an ideal option of operation and maintenance and stuff like that. Wasn't one of the options we had looked at.
Ms. Rodvian?
I just want to add, while there may not be development per se, there, first off, there, there may be down the road, but there will be lots and lots of redevelopment that will bring a lot more individuals. You know, there's talk of, you know, Bowie State University having a satellite campus there that would, you know, use a lot of space that, you know, bring a lot of people using water and sewer. Possible different types of emergency housing. There already is, as you know, like Pascal and Hope House that already have those, and those are part of those systems, and they probably desperately need something new as well. So the number of increase, the number of people using the facilities there will increase, and a lot of those buildings that are currently vacant will eventually become used by many, many people. So I think it's not, it's not an investment that will, it's an investment that will be matched by the, the use that I think we'll ultimately find there.
Mr. Vol.
Hopefully, last question. We'll see. This is an interesting topic, as you can see. Does what you're building meet the capacity that Councilwoman Rodvian is mentioning? Like, are you building for that capacity or are you building for current capacity? What does that look like?
We built for capacity we foresee coming and stuff like that. So not knowing what the eventual long-term plan is and all that, but we built for as much as we can foresee in the near future.
And so what does that mean specifically?
So I guess I'll, so that means specifically, like, for instance, if we were going to build this today, no, no additional flow at all, we might use a smaller diameter force main.
Okay.
Instead, we're going to use the largest force main that we could get and still get the scour velocity through the force main to meet what we need because we don't know what's going to happen in the future.
So you are building for future service expecting there may be more than what's there today?
Yeah, yeah, for, for future development at the Crownsville site.
I got you.
But not, not for the surrounding area.
No, I understand. I think your point about restricted and it's no expectation that it's going to be for the General's Highway corridor. All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Oh, and ladies, I'm sorry.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Bill Number 8525, Leaf Blowers. Ms. Rodvian?
Hopefully, this will be the easiest bill that we have today because it's literally already in place as an executive order from the county executive that came, I believe, about a year ago. And so it really just codifies this and says, you know, this plan is already in progress being implemented, and so we're going to put it in the code so it will continue going forward. And hopefully, the transition will, according, under the bill, will be completed by 2030.
Any, Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To date, so I would imagine we've started rolling over some of the, either the contracts with lands, like the community college, right? They have landscapers out there, and that would be, they would be required to go to.
I don't believe this would apply to the community college.
Oh, it would not.
Kelly County, that's correct. It applies to all departments and offices of the county. That would not include the community college.
Okay, so are there departments that have fully changed over as of right now?
I don't believe, I don't believe there are any departments that have fully changed over as of now. As Councilwoman Rodvian said, this codifies an executive order that the county executive issued last year, and a component of that executive order was not, you know, changing out functioning equipment. But as, as equipment becomes non-workable because they eventually wear out or break down, then we buy electric.
Okay.
Leaf blowers.
Perfect.
So I can, I can get the numbers on how many have been purchased, if you'd like, by the various departments. I think Wreck and Parks would probably be the, have the biggest number, Wreck and Parks and Central Services.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering, since that executive order, what, what has taken place and what have we purchased?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Vol.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So obviously, this is a council-sponsored bill, hence the reason that you all haven't done a fiscal note on it, and I understand that. But what is the cost to the county from the executive order? There's no fiscal note on here. Unless, unless you all put it up.
No, I believe, I believe it's been sent, but it might not be, it might not be on the website.
Looking on the public website, it's not there. I'm looking at what everybody else can see, so.
Let me see if I can.
While you're looking at that, so the question stands, the question is, what is this costing the county to comply with the executive order? What is the anticipated cost of this legislation as it moves forward? What is the ongoing cost? And how does that compare to existing use of gas-powered equipment versus electric or zero emission?
While he's looking that up, Madam Chair, do you mind if I respond?
Go ahead.
So in several studies that have been done on this topic, there actually is a pretty, pretty good balance out in terms of the costs because there are certain costs you're no longer incurring, you're no longer purchasing gas, and the purchase of electricity, even though prices are increasing right now, is still significantly less than purchase of gas and oil and the mixture that has to be used for gas-powered leaf blowers. The maintenance and repair costs are significantly lower. And so a number of studies have, you know, basically found that it turns out to be basically net zero. I don't know if that's exactly where the county's numbers will come out, but.
So I can go through the numbers from the fiscal note. So currently, the Department of Wreck and Parks has 42 backpacks. Switching those all over to electric would be $220,000. Central Services has nine backpack units and six handheld units, which would cost And Public Works currently has an inventory of 67 units. Total replacement cost for battery-powered units for those would be approximately $130,000. So total estimated cost for replacing everything and associated charging equipment would be $380,000 transition phased in over the next five years to 2030. If you were to replace out of pocket all of those gas-powered blowers with, gas-powered blowers today, each one costs about $700, so total replacement cost would be approximately $86,800, but you realize savings on fuel costs and maintenance.
So the delta's 300 grand?
Um.
380 to replace with all-electric, 86 to key.
380, yeah, 290, probably 294, but.
Very specific. That was good math right there, yeah.
Helps with even numbers.
So that's what this costs over the next five years?
Yeah.
But that's still not including, like, you're obviously not calculating the savings in gas, which is a huge part of the expense.
Gas and oil, because they're two-cycle engines, so you probably have to mix it, but yeah.
So what does that cost?
That I don't have.
Is there a reason that wasn't factored in? I mean, because I'm, I'm not trying to dispute what Ms. Rodvian is saying. If it is that significant, it would seem like that would be a very crucial part of the analysis to have.
I can, I can find out.
Yeah. Mr. Trumbull was texting me to tell me he did do a fiscal note, so I'm just noting that. So obviously, it was there, but then my follow-up question is, why doesn't the fiscal note address this? That particular component, the gas and oil.
Cost of gas for.
Yeah.
Leaf blowers over five years.
Ms. Schultz, hold on. Ms. Schultz?
I'll just note that the fiscal notes have been added to the Google Drive folder, and I'll make sure that the deputy administrative officer gets them on the website.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Ms. Picker?
Just a real, I know that batteries on these, battery, battery and battery storage and battery, what's the word?
Replacement.
Replacement or, or disposal is an issue. So it's just something that county needs to be aware of if we're going to move in a swifter pace with going to electric. Yeah?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would also just like to note on that topic, the technology with respect to lithium-ion battery recycling has come, has made leaps and bounds. And so you can get to not 100%, but almost 100% recyclability of batteries that are
And so, you can get to not 100%, but almost 100% recyclability of batteries that are used in... That are used in, you know, electric-powered equipment like leaf blowers.
And the technology gets better all the time. Hopefully, by 2030, when we've done this, we'll be seeing even greater cost savings. So, all right. Any other questions on this one? All right. Moving on to Bill Number 8625, Personnel Employee Relations Police Captains. This is introduced by all of us. So...
So, maybe we don't have to talk about this.
I was going to say.
I think... It's kind of... Does anyone have any questions or anything they want to say, Ms. Pickard?
I don't. If everyone understands what we're doing, I'm fine. But I don't know if the administration, Ann, has sat here all day if you wanted to say something about it or...
So, I will just say, we do have Ann Bedowsky, our Personnel Officer, and Judy Slater, our Assistant Personnel Officer for Employee Relations. Laurie Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. We're comfortable with this legislation. I did have the discussion with the sponsor yesterday, and we're having ongoing dialogue about... Sorry. Councilmember Pickard, who first brought this legislation to my attention. Yeah. Just regarding the extending the window through the end of December for bargaining units to file a certification. I understand why it's being done. In this instance, there was just some concern that in future years, if we don't want to run into a situation where we get a bargaining unit certification at the end of December, and then, we have the Personnel Office has 30 days to respond to that, and then, they have to do elections at the same time Personnel is beginning their negotiations in January. It puts everyone under a time crunch. So, we're having conversations about either sunsetting that date or moving it earlier in future years.
Madam Chair. So, if our captains choose to form their own bargaining unit, that would make 12. And that's what we're capped at in the county, right? 12.
Correct.
If they don't, if they choose to join the FOP, then we still have one slot left for someone, some group of county employees that want to bargain. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with talking about that window at a later date, but, I mean, I think for the immediate future, the bill as it is, is fine, right? The way it is. Can we address that later?
Discuss it, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you all for sitting for so long. Resolution Number 2725 about Anne Rondo Community College.
Okay. Almost there. So, I do have Andrew Little, our Associate Vice President for Learning and Resource Management from the community college. I don't believe Naomi McCallister is coming. Oh, Naomi will be down from the Budget Office in just a minute. And Laurie Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. So, this resolution is to petition the Maryland Higher Education Commission, or MHEC, for state assistance on the Dragoon renovation project. There's some history about the renovations at the community college in the legislative summary. But this resolution, if adopted, would ask the MHEC for a grant of $824,997 to assist the community college in the project.
And while we're at it, let's go ahead, and we'll include Resolution Number 2825 since we have everyone up here because that one is also the community college.
Certainly. So, Resolution 2825 is a similar resolution. This is for state assistance for the guaranteed maximum price bid to package for the Floristano renovation project in the amount of $7,550,067 for the renovation of that building.
All right. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Volkey, they've been sitting here all day. Give them a question.
We all support it.
Okay. All right.
Save money.
All right. Well, thank you for sitting all day with us. I hope you learned a lot about the Health Department and Transportation APF. Resolution Number 2925, Ms. Fiedler, this is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This came out of recent discussions on another bill before the council. And just thought it is long overdue to have some type of manual for forest conservation so that homeowners and HOAs have a guiding document so that they don't inadvertently and unintentionally run afoul of the code and the process.
All right. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I do have Raghu Badami, our Assistant Director for Inspections and Permits. So, we appreciate this resolution. I think that department does feel that a simplified fact sheet that could, you know, suit the needs of average residents efficiently and effectively to answers that they come across or questions that come across, as well as additional references and resources for those seeking more knowledge or understanding would be beneficial. I know they are working on, I believe, a fact sheet to... An update to the website and hope to get that up by the end of the year. The only point I will make is that... So, IMP does not actually oversee the county's forest conservation program. It's planning and zoning. But other than that, I think we're supportive and agree with the intent.
Okay. Ms. Rodvian.
I would just like to be added as a cosponsor. I think this is a really great idea. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would the administration prefer another department create the manual? I thought inspections and permits because of the enforcement. But I'm open to whomever is the appropriate department, just that we have something.
Yes, IMP would be working on either some kind of an owner's maintenance guide or some type of a reference guide. Manual might be... We started looking into what existing manuals are out there, but they are really technical as opposed to working on a 200 or 300-page manual. We want to keep it really something that is more helpful to a homeowner or somebody or HOA president or a HOA board member. We started to look at other municipalities. Montgomery County has some guidance out there. We also started to look at DNR, what guidance they have. So, either some type of a fact sheet that has some reference material or owner's guide that has some similar material with some update or frequently asked questions on the website as to what folks ask us on a day-to-day basis, or we get those questions. We also think that the fact sheet can speak to some common pruning practices, if you will, which could have some pictures on it. I know we had some discussions as a part of the forestry bill.
Yep.
We do think that would be helpful. Once we do have a finished product, like any other product that we have, we do want to work with some stakeholders. We have some partnerships with local nonprofits, HOAs. We want to get that out and maybe get feedback and input to make sure it is readable.
Yep.
Because we want to make sure that it is not too technical for somebody trying to do the maintenance.
Appreciate that. And I would just say, we know resolutions are non-binding. I did have a request to make it... Put in code a manual. I didn't go that route. I just wanted the departments and the administration to understand if this resolution passes, that there is overwhelming support to provide the very information that you have just detailed here to the general public for ease. So, thank you for that.
We can share that reference guide or owner's maintenance guide with you, Councilwoman Fiedler, if you want to give that a look once it is out there, if you have any feedback. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you very much. Last but not least, Resolution Number 3025. This is a charter amendment. Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, since I myself am bumping up against another engagement. The... This resolution is a charter amendment resolution that would expand binding arbitration to all of our collective bargaining units. Currently, only our public safety officers have this access to this bargaining tool, and it's pretty straightforward. So, a vote of five would put it on the November 2026 ballot.
Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Laurie Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. Ann Bedowsky, our Personnel Officer. Judy Slater, our Assistant Personnel Officer for Employee Relations are happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Rodvian.
I am going to be the cosponsor lady today. I'd like to be added as a cosponsor to this as well.
Noted. Thank you. Did I miss...
We said we are in favor of this.
Oh, thank you. I was shuffling papers. Appreciate that.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. That's it. Thank you all.